Welcome, everybody, to September thirteenth. It is Friday, the thirteenth. We're talking a lot about money and gosh. But welcome to the Mates County School Board Workshop for September thirteenth. I want to call this meeting to order. All the agenda amendments, we did add some stuff after publishing, just some of the presentations and things like that that were not on there. Public comments, we do not have any public comments for today's meeting. And I know Ms. Messenger is on Teams. Can she hear us okay?
I can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, so let's jump into our first item today, which is the presentation on the certificates of participation for 2025. Ms. Sellers, I'll give you the floor.
Yes, I wanted to introduce the team that's going to give this presentation today. With me today is Laura Howell. She's with PFM, our financial advisors. On the other side of her is Tom Kai, our senior underwriter. And behind me is Ritesh Patel, our bond counsel with Raymond James. Let Laura take it away.
So, good morning. We are going to discuss, can y'all hear me okay?
I can, yeah. I think the mics can hear you, yeah.
The upcoming issuance of the Series 2025 Certificates of Participation. And just kind of give you an overview of where the district stands right now with their debt. So, to start off, the market rates. This is from a couple of weeks ago, just from the agenda deadline. But this is showing you what the ten-year historical averages have been. The graphic on the right-hand side, those tan bars show you the range from years one to thirty in the B-bow curve. The light blue bar on the top was where we were a year ago. And the dark blue bar is where we are today. So, rates have decreased from a year ago. And you'll see, especially last year, you can see this inversion of the yield curve. And that is starting to smooth out, and it has continued to smooth out with anticipation that the Fed is going to start reducing rates next week. So, very exciting news, and we'll hopefully be in a great position when the district is ready to go to market to borrow this issue. The graphic on the left just shows you where the current rates were compared to one week, one month, and one year ago. So, before we dive into the next slides, are there any questions on the market? So, this is just showing you what your current certificates of participation, the debt outstanding, looks like. This includes principal and interest. Currently, the debt does mature in years 2038. And you'll see what the 2023 issuance was kind of the bulk of this. And we did do an aggregate level to reduce the overall impact on the millage as opposed to if you just did level principal and interest layered on top of the current debt that you already had. This was taking advantage of sort of the inversion in the yield curve as well when we did this, because when we had done it, the rates were lower, a little bit further out than on the short end. So, it was actually advantageous for the district to issue the debt this way. Of the 1.5 mils available to pay debt service, you guys are only using 0.29 mils to cover the maximum annual debt service of $20 million, which occurs in 2033. And that's assuming a fiscal year 25 taxable assessed value of 78.6 million. We do monitor call dates for the district moving forward. And you'll see in the graphic on the bottom, the chart on the right-hand side shows you where those call dates are. The one that was in 2023 was a bank note, which didn't produce savings at the time. But we will be looking when we get to 2026, potential for the 2016 As for refunding. So, we're always looking to see if there's opportunities to save on the debt service outstanding for the district as well. Slide four is showing the sales tax summary of the debt outstanding on this. There was a budgeted receipt of 50.7 million for sales tax revenues in 2024. Of that, the district utilizes 12.7 million, which equates to four times coverage, very healthy coverage for the debt service, and only the one issuance on the sales tax outstanding, the Series 2017, which does mature in 2032, in line with the current sunset. So, skipped ahead, but the refunding part of this as well, this just shows you how we do monitor and over the course of serving as financial advisor for the district, you know, have helped with the district in monitoring potential savings and found 15.2 million of cash flow savings in the refundings that the district has taken advantage of over the years. So, really awesome results for the district in this. Any questions on any of the outstanding debt before we get into the new money needs?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. On slide number three.
Yes.
When it says 0.292 mils of the available 1.5 mils is required, what does that, I understand the English words, but what does it mean that we have 1.5 mils available?
Yeah, so the 1.5 mils is a total based on the taxable assessed value of the 78.6. Of that, legally, you're able to utilize 75%, which equates to 1.125 times. And so, just looking at this quickly, it would be 125-ish roughly to cover the 22 million.
Okay. So, there's a legal limit. I'm just not aware of what you're talking about.
Yes, yes.
So, there's a legal limit on how much money we can borrow?
Yeah, under Florida statutes, 101171, you are able to use up to three-quarters of your capital outlay millage, 75%. You currently levy 1.5 mils, so you can use up to 1.125 mils of revenue to cover your debt service payments on your COPS outstanding.
Okay.
But you don't, you obviously only utilize .2, .9, or 292 at this point. So, you, the point being that you have a lot of capacity at this point to issue debt to fund new projects.
Okay, so, just so I understand what you said, we levy a 1.5 mil capital tax, and the law says that we can use seventy, up to 75% of that.
That for lease purchase payments.
For lease purchase payments. But we're only using .292% of it, so we've got about a mil or so left.
Yeah, you've got about .8 mils or .7 mils or so.
Something like that. Okay, great.
And the other dollars are, you know, going to help ongoing needs for capital projects and such, and maintenance staff often is utilized to pay out of that 1.5 mils. But the state does cap it at 1.5 mils back before the recession of '08. Districts received two mils, and then it was stepped down to the 1.5, and then eventually added the 75% requirement on that 1.5 mils. And so, we look at this typically, you know, we advise not to go over 50% of that 1.5 mils, just in case, you know, there is an economic downturn and your taxable assessed values do decline, to make sure that you really always are within your coverage limits and have, you know, enough funds coming in to pay debt service and other ongoing needs.
And the district obviously has other revenue sources they can utilize. This upcoming issue we're going to talk about, I believe the plan is to use impact fees potentially, and then one and a half mil levy revenues as well. So, and then you all, obviously, as Laura talked about, you do have some excess sales tax, and so those are available as well, depending on the project.
Okay. And so, what I think I heard you say is that you wouldn't, you would recommend never using more than .75 mils to be paying back these, the money that we've borrowed, right?
Yeah, there are situations where, you know, we'll bump over that. But for conservative purposes, for the rating agencies as well, you know, they prefer to make sure. So, typically, that's what we're in line with, which the district has plenty of capacity.
Okay, and we're well underneath that right now.
Absolutely, yes, at the .292, so.
Great, thank you for the education on that.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah.
We will hop back then to slide six and discuss the upcoming needs that would be funded with the Certificates of Participation Series 2025A. And the two projects that have been identified for this are Artisan Lakes Elementary School for a total budgeted project amount of 70 million, and Ry Ranch Elementary School with a total budgeted project amount as well of $70 million. And the details are on there where these are being built, and I'm sure if more information wants, Rachel can dive into this, since she brings this information. And we do look at different financing structures, just like I had mentioned on the 2023. We had looked at an overall aggregate level to take advantage of the market at the time, where the yield curve was. And so, that's something that we continuously do when there's new issuances coming up. And so, you'll see on slide seven, this is just a 20-year final maturity of level debt service. So, level principal and interest payments on the new money issuance over the total life of the issuance outstanding going out until 2044. And so, you'll see the tan bars are what the current debt services that's outstanding for the district, and the blue bars layer on top of that, the new money needs of 140 million of those projects. The red line does show when the sales tax expired. So, as Ritesh had mentioned, those revenues would be legally available to help fund these projects as well if there was a need to do so. I know there's intention as well to utilize impact fees that are coming in for new growth to help cover these payments as well. So, those payments could potentially be used, the impact fees on the blue portion of this debt service as well. And you'll see the yellow line on the top is that 50% of the 1.5 mils where you're lining up with that, to show you the reference of where we look at, you know, when we're structuring this. So, this is sized with a project fund of $140 million, the true interest cost of 4.16%. We would anticipate that as a very conservative estimate, that likely it would be lower than that. And so, your average annual debt service on the new issuance is the $10 million with your aggregate MADS for your old debt service, and this potential new issuance of 32.6, which equates to your millage requirement, if we were to structure it this way, of .4328. So, still well under the .75 of where we look at that 50%. And you'll see just along the graphics, sort of, it's showing you where MADS hits at those different years. And that, you know, it drops off significantly in 2039 to about 10.6 million. And did want to point that out before we hop to the next slide, which shows what would be the wrapped structured. So, this again is looking at potential for overall aggregate level debt service, rather than the prior one where it was level in principal and interest solely on the new issuance. This looks at the total structure to make it level. What that does is reduce MADS, but it does increase your interest cost on this. And this is something that we would definitely look into more when we get to go to enter the market next spring, to see where rates are, how it's best to structure, what investor demand is across the curve. Those are all things that we take into consideration. You know, an advantage to this is obviously you do have the lower MADS, so the yellow line you're not nearly bumping up on even before, you still have plenty of capacity there as well. But this millage requirement would be .37, .37 mils out of the 1.5. But it is, the net interest is the 1.28 million on this compared to 66.8. And so, depending on future capital needs, and I know that there's, you know, projects down in the pipeline that have been identified, that those will be taken into consideration as well when we're looking at this to go to issue next spring. We're not talking about those today, but we understand that there could be potential needs down the road as well, and we want to make sure that there's plenty of capacity while weighing your potential interest cost on top of, you know, the additional growth needs in the district as well on this. So, and this just shows you the summary of the two for comparison. Both have the same final maturity, both the same project amount, the wrapped structure where it's at overall aggregate level, does have the higher interest cost and true interest cost, and a slightly longer average life, but it does have the lower MADS, which requires less millage. So, these are all things that we take into consideration, and we would layer on any potential needs down the road as well when doing this analysis, so that we have, you know, a really good picture of everything that's coming down the road. So, what is coming in the parameters of the bond resolution that Ritesh has drafted on this is a not-to-exceed par amount of 150. The current project estimate amounts of the 140 million that have been identified, the final GMPs we know are not available yet. So, there's just that little bit of extra cushion for the 150. We like to make sure that there's that availability, so that if for some reason those projects increase, we are not scrambling to go back to the board before we have to issue to ask for an increase in that. But this is the absolute maximum of the par amount that you could issue is that 150, so you can't go above that. The underwriters discount, we would have set at .4% of the par amount, not to exceed, which is very standard in the market for Florida school districts. A true interest cost, not to exceed 5%. Like I said, we would anticipate that to continue to climb with how market rates are trending right now. But again, just that cushion is in there in case, you know, something crazy happens in the next few months before we issue. And a not-to-see a final maturity of July 1st, 2045. Again, the numbers we showed was 2044, but that just in case things get bumped a little bit down the road, it gives us that ability to push it out a year if we need to. And we can always shorten it as well, if that's advantageous to the district when we go to issue, if we wanted to go something lower than 20 years.
Ma'am, what does the acronym MADS stand for, please?
Maximum Annual Debt Service.
Maximum Annual Debt Service, okay.
That's just the largest amount of principal and interest that comes due in one given year of the life of the debt, or all your debt, potentially.
Okay, great.
That's the number, they can't be .75 or higher.
Okay, got it, thanks.
So, it could occur 10 years down the road, but based on your current taxable assessed values, we make sure that it's not above what's, you know, even coming 10 years down the road.
So, great, thank you.
I have more of a kind of overall picture of what we do with this, just for the public. We borrow millions of dollars to build our schools. The money is set aside with an account, in an account, and we pull that money out as needed when we're building our schools. And that is paid by our millage 1.5 and our sales tax. Am I right in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or impact fees.
Or impact fees, correct, impact fees. So, but when we're pulling those funds over is when we're actually doing the building and we're seeing the project summary sheets, and it's going on our agenda, and we're proving that, yes, we're going to bring over that $40 million over for site work or whatever, architectural work or whatever. I just want the public to understand, that's what we do. It's just no more than getting a mortgage on a home that you're buying. We're doing the same thing. We're getting mortgages through the COPS process, and we're building our schools and we're paying them off, and that's what these charts indicate what we do. And the interest rate that we get at that, hopefully, that overall interest rate reduces as the loan matures, because it kind of fluctuates. Am I correct in assuming that?
So, the debt is issued as fixed rate.
Okay.
Over the life of each of those issuances, it's fixed rate for that. So, there is, it's set, we know what you're doing. So, if interest rates were to drastically rise in a year, that doesn't impact what you currently have outstanding, so it'd just be like a fixed rate mortgage as opposed to, you know, an ARM or something like that.
Right, adjustable mortgage, right.
And we don't get that percentage locked in until we issue the debt.
Right.
Which is spring issue or whatever.
I guess my question would be then, for that, at any time if we saw the interest rate drop considerably, we have a process that we go through that we can remortgage? Right.
Yeah, Laura can speak to that. Typically, that's the first few slides she was discussing about refundings. That's what's been done over time. You typically have a 10-year call protection on these transactions, meaning you cannot refund the debt within the first 10 years. And at year 11, basically, you can call all the debt if rates have dropped and save yourself money. You've done that over time and saved about 15.2 million dollars.
But it's no more than a person owning a home and refinancing.
So, it's a little different than that, but yes, like where you could refinance every year if you wanted.
Right, but we can't.
Right, and there are ways, you know, structures that are innovative, that, you know, you could issue as taxable and then take out as tax exempt, things like that, to capture savings before the 10 years, since advanced refundings were removed with the tax reform in 2017, where previously you were able to advance refund if rates dropped, and now we have to wait until the 10-year par call for that. But there's other structures, and Tom could speak to that if you're interested in hearing about, you know, sort of what the banks offer in that way. But yes, once you do it, it's just like you refinancing your mortgage.
The only difference on that is that when we, when you refinance your home, if you buy your home in year one, you refinance in year five, your mortgage from year five will be 30 years. We don't extend the debt when we do this.
Right.
So, this debt, if it's refunded, will stay, the final maturity will stay at 2045. You will not go beyond that.
Okay, alright. Slide five, you had the sales tax on 2012. Is that what the sales tax line is, 2012? Then it has a date, then a amount, and then 2003, an amount? I'm not reading that line very well for some reason.
So, that was the, we, in 2012, on April 3rd, we were able to refinance the Series 2003, which was a par amount of 49.49 million was refinanced.
Okay.
It allowed the district to have a net present value savings of 2.9 million or 6.36%. A cash flow savings of over 3 million, which equates to an average annual cash flow savings of 554,000. That refinance rate in 2012 was 1.28%, and the final maturity remained the same of 2017.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was reading. Am I reading all these numbers correct? So, that's how much we saved just by doing that one. That would be a good example of refinancing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that whole chart is great, that.
It is.
That's why we have you and you're doing what you're doing, is if you look at the total net savings, you know, 13 million, and I mean, we've done a really good job of capturing the refunding and doing the calls when we can, so.
So, you're not money.
So, when we get this money, when we borrow it in the spring, let's say it's March 15th, does it go into an account where we get some interest on it while we're waiting to pay the builders down the road?
Absolutely, and your investment advisors are here, and I'm sure they would be thrilled to dive in.
That's next round.
One of the things I do want to know, and this was kind of in line to just inform the public, you know, it does sound like there's a lot of money, but something that, and Ritesh can speak to this in detail, but we don't go beyond what's absolutely needed for the projects. We're not over borrowing, because there are spend regulations on that that the IRS monitors, that the district does have to report, and if you want to just briefly.
Yeah, there's a concept of arbitrage, which you may have heard that term. It's essentially for governments where you can borrow at a tax exempt rate, a lower interest rate, invest the proceeds that are sitting there until they get used for building at a higher interest rate, so thereby you're earning the spread there. And that's called arbitrage. Tax code does not like you to earn arbitrage. So, there are many tax rules involved about how quickly you're going to spend the money, whether you have to pay rebate to the US Treasury if you do earn arbitrage. And you have an arbitrage rebate consultant that comes in every five years or so and does those calculations for you to make sure you are rebating any earnings that you have to to the Treasury. Now, there's exceptions to arbitrage, there's situations where you can keep arbitrage. Particularly, we'll be talking about that in a couple of weeks on your tan, when you guys do a tax anticipation note borrowing. There are some special rules involved there that may allow you to keep it in the current interest rate environment. But yeah, there's a lot of tax code that goes in this.
Great, thanks.
I don't see, I don't see teams, so I can't see if Ms. Messenger has a question or not, or a raised hand. No?
I don't have any at this time.
Oh, good, nevermind. She heard me anyways. Anything else? I think you were done, correct, Laura?
Yeah. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Very informative.
Thank you very much. And we'll decide at another point whether to do the level or the wrapped.
Yes, so this will come to the board for approval, I believe it's October 4th, 8th. And we'll be looking at this, you know, the anticipation is the Fed is going to start lowering rates in September and continue. And so, when we get to the early part of 2025, we'll be looking at this issuance in addition to potential future needs as well, and make that decision before we enter the market.
I did have one more question for me. Slide 10, you're basing that we probably go for 150 million instead of the 140.
So, this is just your not-to-exceed that the board is going to approve. So, if the project costs actually decrease, and it's only 120 million for the project cost, that's all we would issue. But if for some reason it increases from 140 to something more, this just allows you, for us, not to have to come back to the board for reconsideration.
And there's a cost to doing the COPS, right? So, you would want that to exceed 140 million?
Yes, I mean, there's costs of issuance involved and rating agencies and things like that, yes, but that's not $10 million.
No, well.
That's included in all of this. Any of the costs of issuance are already included in all the numbers that were shown to you, and very conservative estimates on that.
But if we're looking at 70, 140 million in construction costs.
Right.
We would want to make sure that we do cover the cost of issuance.
Yes, and not go into a ton of detail, and Tom could probably talk to you all night about this, but there's, typically, these bonds are issued at 5% coupon. So, your par amount is actually less, and there's more premium. So, we size for the exact project fund that you want, but if for some reason there's a shift in the market as well, that discount rates, you know, are wanted, all of that kind of plays into this. But yes, 150 would give us enough cushion that we shouldn't have to come back to the board for reconsideration on this. But it does, everything includes the cost of issuance, correct?
You have to use this money on the projects that are listed?
You do, assuming board approval for these projects, we do have some flexibility in the sense that we, I think in our resolution, we say. we say other projects that may be legally allowed, but obviously we would want the board, uh, to know about that and make sure. If the funds we're gonna use for anything else, uh, you would be well aware of it and, and sign off on that. Um, and there's also other rules. If we have a bond insurer and the project changes, we may have to go to them for consent. So typically speaking, we're not changing projects, but things do arise sometimes after we issue the debt, um, where projects get substituted and we can work within that to, to make sure it works for the district.
Okay.
Awesome.
Alright, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Turn my heat.
Do you have a question for, apply for Dr. Weisong?
Sure.
You, you and I had, had had a discussion about some potential other ways of, and apparently we, we have, we decided not to go in that direction. Well, I, I'm not trying to be coy. We talked about maybe MTC and even the SRQ project and maybe borrowing some money for that. And then we, apparently that's not part of what we're, or you've made, and made the decision that's not a good way to go, or?
So, uh, we have had further planning discussions about a couple of the future needs at MTC. I think, um, I think we've made progress, uh, on the hangar project. We have some other thoughts about the, um, future expansion needs at, at MTC that we might take a look at in a future need.
Okay.
Um, because, just because of the timing that's involved. So I think, uh, uh, you know, again, we, we certainly could modify, um, but I think right now our priority is wrapping up the process for these two elementaries so that we can get financing and get moving with construction. But I do think we're thinking about options related to the MTC expansion, maybe for a future project.
Okay. And just for my fellow board members, I was at the, as a member of the MTC council or board or whatever we call that, there, you know, they, they are getting very full there and they're looking at expanding, you know, building that, that other building behind the building that they currently have. And so I had thought about, well, why not just borrow some, if we're gonna borrow a hundred and forty, why not borrow, they need about, I think, eight million dollars to get that built. And so I talked to Dr. Weisong about potentially doing that and obviously we can't talk about that. Till we're in, till we're in the sun.
Appropriations, yeah.
Till we're in the sunshine. So that was what I was discussing with him currently and.
Is this that launch project?
Yeah, that.
Yeah, the one we asked for the appropriations, yeah.
Yeah, so that came up and that's why I was asking him about that. And apparently, you know, the decision has been made to do that at a different time and in, in a different way. I mean, I suppose we could do something different as the board, but I, I'm just letting you know what my discussion was about and what's going on there.
I, I, I do think that, it, just, I mean, I know we're kind of off topic and I, I mean, are we good talking about this?
Yeah, we're within the.
The range right here? I thought so. Um, I do think that that project is extremely, uh, w- w- what, what would you say, um, priced very low. Those numbers were for like three or four years ago. I don't think we're building that building now for what we originally thought. Um, is my, is, and so I think we need to go back and make sure we've got the actual true numbers. Just from, just, cause obviously I was, I was pushing for the launch and we're talking with people to try to help the appropriation process and things like that. Um, that eighteen million that we thought were sixteen million roughly, um, would not be the cost. They thought it could be almost double that now. So, just FYI.
Yeah, they seem to be getting.
Not saying this may not be a good way to fund it, but, yeah.
They seem to be getting pretty full over there. I'm just, you know, from walking around and what Mr. Wagner is showing me.
For sure.
They're getting full, but anyway.
For sure.
This is kind of a follow-up on our, our discussion about legislative priorities and, and the, uh, whether to ask for the, the Congress, uh, the legislature to go back to the two point, two percent or two mils. And, um, point out that we started borrowing, it looks like in twenty-ten. And it was in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine that they reduced our capital levy. So, that had a consequence, you know, we're, we're still paying for it, um, and, you know.
And it looks like, what will we be at? Did I see somewhere that we'll be at like point five mils once we, once we move?
Yeah, it was like point four, not, something like that. Yeah, it was pretty close.
But eventually we're gonna get to the point where we just, like, we'll hit that point seven five.
Potentially.
You know, it just keeps going up a little bit and up a little bit, so.
But that's just debt service. I'm just talking about the fact that we even had to go out for debt.
Well, that's true. Or we could bring down the cost of building schools somehow too, but it's a whole nother topic.
Yeah.
Change in the SRF.
That's a deep one.
Anyway, okay, great.
Um, alright, so brings us to our annual investment report, um, for, uh, the fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Sellers?
Yes, so I wanted to introduce our Deep Blue, uh, investment team. We have, um, David, um, Chang and we've got Dominic Cristofaro, if I said that right, and John Scott. So I'm gonna, uh, let them take it away.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. Uh, my family moved down to Sarasota Bradenston area in nineteen seventy-one and I, and I am a product of the Florida public school system. So thank you very much for all you do. Uh, the annual, uh, portfolio, first of all, before we talk about investments, we always look, look at the economic update. And so what is going on and what's the effect it is gonna have on your investment portfolio? One thing everybody's talking about, next week, next Wednesday, the Fed is going to reduce rates by zero point two five percent or twenty-five basis points to a new target of five to five point two five percent overnight. What's that mean to you? Well, uh, your investments are still gonna do pretty well. Two, the market is trying to get ahead of itself yet again. Uh, at the beginning of this year, the markets felt that the, that we're gonna go into recession, that the Fed was gonna reduce rates five to six times before the end of this year. What is going on now is I think the Fed is gonna lower rates one time and they're gonna see, watch the economic data that comes in. So what's going on here in, uh, Manatee County? We are in what I call a tale of two cities here. You have people moving to Florida because they love it down here. We're the number three state in the country in population. You see the assessed values in Manatee County going up. It's very good. On the other hand, the downside to that is prices are rising faster than expected. Okay? One of the biggest things that we hear when we talk to other school districts, other cities, other county clerks is workforce housing. So right now, people who retired here in two thousand are finding out, who are on fixed income, are having a hard time to, uh, to, uh, uh, pay for insurance. Think about your property insurance bill, auto insurance. I was shocked when I was doing some research that the average, uh, policy for homeowners in Florida is ten thousand dollars, average. So that's half above, now, that, that, yeah, the average is ten thousand. And the rest of the country is two thousand eight hundred dollars. I was stunned when I, when I did that research there. So it's, it is a tale of two cities. I think the top twenty percent of wage earners are doing just fine. They either have no mortgage, they locked in a two and a half percent mortgage in twenty twenty-one, uh, they're earning five percent on their money market fund, uh, and they're traveling, uh, all over the world. The bottom forty percent, I think, are really having a tough time because these are the renters, these are wage earners. Um, just case in point, uh, my stepson, uh, two years ago received a five hundred dollar increase in his apartment. Well, he's an alley worker. I go, where are we gonna, you know, you're already working forty hours a week. Wha- what are you gonna do? So that side there is, 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 is where we are. It's, it's a double edged sword for us here in, in the state of Florida, especially in southwest Florida because it is one of the more popular spots for people to move to from up north, from California, Illinois, the northeast. So that's where we are with, with, with that. Any questions? Comments? Okay. So, you look at the current market conditions, uh, I think we're still pretty good. Interest rates are going to be fine for you. I think from both the investment and, and borrowing side, you're pretty good. Uh, for us, on the next page, please, you have your investment summary. Okay. So before we start on the investment summary here, you look at, the state of Florida has a state investment statute. It's called, uh, two eighteen point four one five. You don't need to remember that. But the state of Florida says you have to have a certain type of investments you're allowed. Very high quality, uh, fixed income, doesn't, that, that does not get too crazy. Then on top of that, we, uh, we've been your investment advisor since twenty sixteen. We then worked with your finance team to create your own investment policy statement. That's an IPS. You're, you're gonna hear that a lot. IPS, but it's an investment policy statement. We further take what the state allows you to do and say, okay, what else do you like? To make restrictions on. So for us, let's say a five-year corporate bond would say you should have no more than twenty percent of your portfolio in that and no more than five percent per issuer. But for your qualified public depository account at JP Morgan, then you're allowed to have a hundred percent because you have access to that every day and there's no risk to your principal. So far, the more risks you have, the further we, that we restrict how much you can have of that individual security. So with that said, you, you are now looking at your investment summary. The district's portfolio is, is in what we call local government investment pools, LGIPs. Those are, and you're well diversified. You have four different types. Florida Fixed Income Trust, which is managed by Deep Blue Investment Advisors. You have Florida Prime, which is managed by Federated. You have Florida Palm, which is, uh, uh, managed by US Bank Asset Management. And you have Florida Class, which is managed by, uh, Public Trust Advisors. So you're very well diversified there. So what is a local government investment pool? Well, it's, I call it a money market fund for local governments. Only local governments are allowed to be in there. And each one of your pools, you have daily access to and there is no risk to your principal. And we took advantage of the market. Beginning in June of twenty twenty-two, when interest rates rose, we decided to have the allocation a- a- as it is today, as you see. Uh, you have, um, three hundred and forty-four million in, in your, in your, uh, regular, uh, investment portfolio. And then your bond proceeds, which is also underneath a different investment policy, but it's only defined by the state of Florida, the state of Florida statutes. So you're, so you have a total of, uh, over four hundred and eighty-seven million dollars right now between your bond proceeds and your regular investment portfolio.
You have a question there real quick?
Yes, sir.
So, on the top of the chart here, that money is not being used to service any kind of debt or anything, or, no, it's just?
The, these are funds that you allocate internally. So a lot of these funds are restricted.
Right.
Okay, so they're already designated for some, some, for a, a, a purpose already.
Right.
So what, uh, your finance team does, they do pool investment accounting. And what they do is they say, okay, they come to us, they go, okay, David, we want, we have three hundred and forty-four million total. Where do you recommend for us to, to put this money?
Okay. The, the reason I ask that is in, if you go down to the second part of the chart, that, those numbers are for money that apparently we've borrowed as COPS to pay for building, right?
Correct.
So is the money above the three hundred and forty-four million, is that being used to service any kind of debt that we've borrowed money on? Or is that just money that's sitting to pay for something that's coming up, like curriculum or?
Yes. The, the, the money in the, in the top part, the three hundred and forty-four million is dying for anything other than your bond proceeds.
Anything other than, anything other than the bond, what do you mean by the bond?
So the bond proceeds on the bottom, your, your COPS twenty twenty-three, your COPS, uh, twenty twenty-three A. We've decided to take that portion and separate that. So therefore, uh, I think like Ritesh talked earlier about, uh, you have arbitrage rebate. So what we do is we create a separate account for your bond proceeds. So it's very easy for, for the finance team to, to determine, uh, where, where things go. The, the top part of three hundred and forty-four million, this is basically money that you're gonna have to run the school district.
Okay.
Whatever you need.
Okay. So if I, it would be like, it's like a, a big savings account, maybe?
Yes, absolutely.
Like if I know, hey, I need a new roof for my house, but I'm not gonna do it until nine months from now. I take the money, I stick it in my savings account, it earns a little bit of interest while it's sitting there. And then nine months down the road, I pull it out and pay for my roof. Is that, so, is that?
Correct.
Alright. I'm smarter than I look, so, alright. Figuring it all out. Alright, thanks. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Great question. So on the bottom here, you also have the investment ratings. So another level of, of comfort for you is each of these pools are rated the highest by nationally recognized eight, rating agencies. So on the bottom, you see S and P, that's Standard and Poor's. You have Booty's and you have Fitch. So the Florida Fit Cash Pool is rated triple A F, S one plu- uh, S one. So what that means is, is the highest, it's a, a, uh, floating rate pool. It's managed to dollar in, dollar out. Uh, you have the Florida Fit Choice Pool, which is rated triple A F. Uh, and then you have your Florida Prime, Florida Palm, Florida Class, which are rated triple A M. And all it is, the difference is, uh, S and P uses M, Fitch uses F. Uh, you have the highest rating there. So that's another thing that gives you peace of mind, uh, knowing that these are the highest rated pools that are available.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Great. Next slide, please. And then here we are, your portfolios, your portfolio statistics for your fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So from July one of twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, you look at the middle column there, fiscal year twenty twenty-four earned income. So all your investments that you kept in for your, uh, non-bond proceeds in fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, you earned nineteen million, one hundred and forty-four thou- one hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, eight ninety-two point seven four. That is really, really good compared to two years ago when interest rates were at, at rock bottom. There was really nothing there. But, uh, the inverted yield curve, meaning short-term interest rates are higher than long-term, we've been able to keep yourself short. No risk to your principal. At the same time, earning nineteen million dollars is not bad on, on, on your non-bond proceeds. And then on bond proceeds, you issued it, uh, like Ms. Bray said earl- asked earlier, this is money that you set aside and you, uh, you draw it down as you need. You also earn an additional seven point seven million dollars in the last fiscal year just on those bond proceeds. So for total, you earn almost twenty-seven million dollars on, uh, in your investment portfolio for both your bond proceeds and your regular operating reserves. That is really good. I think even with the Fed lowering rates, because these are pools, pools meaning that there's a lot of secu- not all securities mature at the same time. Even though Fed is start, are gonna start lowering interest rates, uh, in September, I think maybe one more, maybe one more interest rate cut before the end year, but doubtful. Uh, I think people wanna avoid the election and we'll see what happens after that. Uh, I think the economy is better than people think. So with that said, uh, I think you will still earn quite a bit of interest income for next year because of these pools. Not all securities are there.
Um, I just, I ran, um, a calculation and for the, um, not counting the bond proceeds, that's five and a half percent for the year. That sounds about right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then the bond proceeds, we haven't had those in effect for all ye- the whole year, right? So, so it wouldn't, uh, so that would be a lower if I ran that.
All your money, all these pools have averaged over five percent for your fiscal year, uh, which is good, really good. And that's gonna help offset a lot of pressures that you're gonna have on your expense side of your budget. I mean, services aren't going down, teacher salaries aren't going down, uh, you know, uh, it, it, it is, uh, it, it's a miracle what you all do here and, and, and I thank all of you for everything you do every day for the kids. Cause, uh, my wife's is a speech language pathologist and, 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 uh, she deals with, uh, you know, birth to three. So we, we believe in, in, in education and it's a, it's a great thing. So these are great numbers for you here. Uh, I think you're set. Uh, I think, uh, Ms. Sellers and Ms., uh, Molly Hayden are doing a great job. We love working with them, so thank you very much.
So I have more questions?
Yes, sir.
Be more, better educated. So through my education being on the school board, I mean, what I've learned is that, and it was repeated today, there are, the, the IRS doesn't like it, doesn't like ag- what was the term called, aggregate?
Arbitrage.
Arbitrage, yes. So, but it appears that only applies to money that you borrow. It doesn't apply, so the IRS is okay with the top portion of this chart. We can earn, we could earn nineteen million, twenty-five million, thirty million. They're, they're not worried about that. They, they're worried about money that you borrow and invest and then you're trying to make money off of money that you invested. But we can earn as much money as we want in our quote-unquote savings account that we have with money that we didn't borrow. Okay, good, alright. Okay, good, all right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
And we will continue to monitor markets to see, you know, when is a good time for us to, uh, you know, find better alternatives. We constantly see where the market is. Uh, but right now, this is the most cost efficient way, uh, to manage your money is to run, run it through these pools.
Okay, I don't think we have any other questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board, I know, yeah, I was gonna say, let's, let's take a brief recess, cause I know the next presentation probably more than 30 minutes and so we're gonna be in our hour and a half. Let's go, uh, just 10 minute recess, we'll be back at 10 again.
All right. All right, welcome back. We are gonna move on to item number three is the update on enrollment and future schools, which we just got talked about with COPS and building future schools, so ties right in. So Dr. Weisong, I'll give it to you first and let you guys roll. Thanks.
Good morning Chairman, Board members. Thank you for spending time with us today. Now that the school year is well underway, we've been in session for a month and board with your approval of the budget at our meeting on Tuesday night. We're settled into this year and really ready to start planning for next year and beyond. And of course, we're always working in multiple years. This presentation is a collaboration of a lot of different departments, a lot of different leaders. And so you've got a panel in front of you, but we're also gonna change out some folks during the course of this presentation. And we wanna ask that as you see questions or as questions come to you on each slide, we would love to have your, we would love to have your questions as we go because this is a lengthy presentation and it starts a little broad and then by the end it gets pretty detailed. So just giving you a preview of where we're heading. But again, this is a multi-department collaboration across all three divisions of the organization, Finance, Operations, Instruction. We've really been working on this. Well, some have been working on this since really before I even arrived. But you may remember that at the end of my 100-day entry plan, one of the areas that I identified for future study was student assignment, our enrollment processes, our competitiveness in the changing public education landscape. And so, and so some of those concept studies, meetings are reflected in this work. I wanna highlight, in addition to the individuals you're gonna hear from today, I wanna thank Darlene Black, who's a supervisor in our Information Technology Department. She provides our enrollment numbers, makes sure that all our data gets up to Florida DOE so that we get all of the funding that we're entitled to and helps with a lot of our enrollment projections. So you won't hear for her, from her today, but she gets a lot of work done for us. And then of course, Mike Penley, our executive planner, who is providing all of our kind of growth projections and understanding where our community is heading. And then again, thank you to the deputy superintendents and Mr. Chapman. You won't hear from all of them today, but again, this has been collaborative work across our organization. I also wanna thank Dr. Rio and Mr. Richardson for being here. You'll have an opportunity to hear from both principals today. And thank you to their assistant principals who are holding down the fort so that they can be with us this morning. So we wanna begin with a very brief enrollment update and we could spend a lot of time on this one slide, but this is really just to set the context for the work ahead. The table on the left, again, is quite simplified, but it shows you where we were at this year versus last year. They're two days apart in the counts, but, but it's pretty close. And Board members, as you remember, the 10-day count is important because that's where we look at all of our enrollment across schools and we make sure that we are properly staffed, moving around personnel if necessary. The great news this year is that we did not have to move anyone around, but we did have to add some allocations because as you can see, our numbers are up. So day 10 last year, district-operated schools were at 41,076 students. Day 8 this year, 41,631 students. So district-operated schools and sites were up a grand total of 555 students. Our charter schools were up 452 students for a total growth of just over 1,000. This data does not include our voluntary pre-kindergarten programs because they are not funded in the same way as our K-12 programs. These numbers do not include home education. Those families register with the school district but, but don't have any regular involvement and there's no funding involved, so we don't include that group in this count. And then are the various Florida empowerment scholarship programs, commonly known as vouchers, are not included in these numbers either. So again, we see that in, in, overall in Manatee Public Schools, enrollment is up. What's notable and not displayed on this slide is that our district-operated schools were well above the staffing projection and the state projection. So if you took, or if you took the overall number that's in state documents and you back out all of the different programs and then you back out the charter school projections, we were actually projected to lose students this year. And not only did that not happen, but again, we're up even more than we projected. Our growth is mostly at elementary and that's positive because actually, middle school has been an area where enrollment was down a little bit and that's flattened out. And as an additional note, and this is typical, our actual numbers are higher than these today because we always see a little bit of a spike in enrollment after the Labor Day holiday. So, so again, numbers certainly appear to be healthy and we're committed to continuing to grow that enrollment. And I've, I've talked with our leadership team and our principals about a competitive, family-centered mindset. So the reality is we're in a choice environment. How do we help understand what our families' needs and expectations are? And then how do we adjust policy, practice, and strategy to be sure that we're, that we're meeting those families and where, you know, where they wanna be? And so really, right now, that's looking at two areas. The first is enhancing the quality of our articulation, particularly movement between elementary and middle schools and what that handoff looks like. And so you'll be seeing some different approaches there. And then also continuing to review the innovative programs that we have, how we market them, and also how we promote K-12 feeder patterns and school pathways. For example, with Guy Harvey, right, Anna Maria King, and then up to Manatee High, how you build programs across schools and grade levels. One of the new requirements that we've put in place this year is that each of our principals will spend a day on the, on another campus that's at a different grade level, but within their feeder pattern. So that our principals are seeing the programs at their feeder schools in action and spending time with those principals, which will improve our, our communication and our facilitation of articulation. Any questions on enrollment?
Yeah, I have one. And that's on the funding of the FEFP. Is that done based on the date, 10-day count? Or is it based on the estimate? And is it our estimate or is it the state's estimate?
Great question. So really, the process starts with the legislative session. Ms. Black and our leadership team look at some different projection models and trends and we ultimately send or agree to a target enrollment number with DOE. That helps facilitate the formation of the state budget. The day 10 count is an internal metric for us because we have to get everything in place to be sure that we're in compliance with the class size amendment by Survey 2, which is mid-October. That mid-October count, which gets sent up to Tallahassee, is what confirms our funding. And that data comes back to us in a form of a dollar amount in January when we get what's called the Calc III report. And then that happens again in February to bring in our second semester funding.
But if the state does its budget based on estimates and let's say they estimate everybody's gonna be down and so the, the FEFP allocated and the budget is low and everybody comes in high, that's when allocation kicks in, right? Where we're all...
Right, so we're, we're gonna submit our higher numbers. We know that other districts are down enrollment, right? And so it goes through that process. It is important that, that the release of that January calculation is important because that's kind of the squaring up point. And there is always the possibility of a proration, right? If, if, if everyone is up and you start hitting funding ceilings, then, then a proration is possible. That's why a fund balance is important in, in case those things do happen. That's why you wanna have a healthy reserve, but being up is certainly better than being down.
Thank you. I have a question. Okay, our legislators all know, just like the COPS presentation, everybody wants to come to Florida. Certainly, are they projecting any kind of FEFP growth? Not just the first, second, and third calc, but for '25, '26? Are they looking at that? I hope we are because it's getting, you know, I'm not gonna say out of control. It's, we really need to be looking at a, like we do in strategic planning, the five-year planning, are we looking at five-year student growth planning?
Sure. Yes, and I mean, those models exist and I would, I would argue that once upon a time, they were more reliable than they are now because we are in a more competitive school choice environment, right? And so we, we know that our families have an array of choices. And, and so it, it's different from how it used to be because again, you can, you know, you can build algorithms and run data on here's new construction and historically, here's how many children we, we get from certain-sized houses or certain types of housing. But the reality is they can go to charter, they can take a voucher, they can go non-public altogether, you can go home. You have so many different options and that's where that, that's where we have to be sure we understand what our families' needs are, right? And adapt our district so that we're competitive. Because we, you know, we want all of this to balance out at the end. We, we don't wanna build schools that are empty, right? We also don't wanna have all of our schools overcrowded, but it's a market environment and so the, the planning is much more complex than it used to be. So the answer to your question is absolutely yes, we're planning, but there are more variables than ever before. And I think that's the challenge that's facing every single school board in Florida right now.
Right.
Just real quick, just a quick anecdote here. First, I wanna say, I know we were sent this last night, I looked at this last night and we'll see this presentation going, but I think it's fantastic. Like I think this is, you're talking about this marketing environment. I know this is weird to say as a school district, like we've gotta market ourselves and we've gotta make, you know, we're the choice, but we, we have to. Like this is the competitive environment, right? Which is, fine, I'm a competitor, I'll compete. So my, my, but my thought is just look at the enrollment data and I mean, if I'm wrong here, I may be absolutely wrong, but I thought when we were looking at our numbers with, like as we were going through the budget process, that charters, and this is again, we don't control them, they say, hey, to the state, we think we're gonna have X number enrollment. Weren't they projecting to be like somewhere between like 11,500 and 12,000? They came in at 10,300? Am I correct in that?
You are Chairman, so when our charters each project their enrollment, when you aggregated all of that, I think as of the end of May, that number was well over 12,000. I think it was 12,300. And so some of our charters reduced their enrollment targets over the summer, but overall, as a group of schools, they're, they're coming in lower, you know, than, than projected. And this is the, this is where, again, there's a science to this, but a lot of this is art and a little bit of crystal ball. If we had presumed 100% of that target for charters and 100% of the numbers that the state was projecting for vouchers, we would've staffed at 39,000 and change.
Right.
And we, we, we would've been way, way under, right? And our classes would be massively full. So the good news is we, we felt confident that the numbers were gonna come in higher than, than taking all of those subtractions out. We didn't come in as high as we ended up, which is why we've put some additional teaching vacancies out there. The other option, right, or the other reality you prepare for is that if you overstaff and the numbers don't come in, then you're either spending against your fund balance or you're potentially releasing people from employment, which is the very last resort because you're gonna need those people later as employees go on leave or move out of area or whatever. And so you, you never wanna do that. And again, that's why you want that healthy fund balance.
Yeah, and it's a balance act. I mean, I think the whole thing is, it's definitely a balance act. And yeah, I would just, I would just point that out. I, I thought it was around like 12. And, but I think that also to, to the point of the rest of this, this slide, and I don't think anybody else has a comment or question, so we can move on, but to the point of the rest of this and where we're moving in our thought process is, you know, I think that charters have always had, were the smaller schools size typically. So we, we do know what the parents want a little more, we're a little more free to be able to do some things here and there, whatever. But I think that if, if our mindset becomes that of connecting with the, the, the community and the parents, but then also we have things that, that we can offer that just charters can't, to be quite frank, right? And, and I think that's gonna be huge for us to be able to use. So appreciate, appreciate. You can, you can go on.
But you're, and Chairman, you're exactly right about that. And actually, the, my, the, that, the swearing-in day, right, it was July 3rd last year. I'd said my, one of my goals here was how do we individualize for students, but take advantage of the scale that we have, right? To your point, we have a ton of programs and options. It's all about connecting kids based on interests and needs and family goals. And that, and the scale is our advantage. So how do we make it feel small and personalized with the advantage of scale? So, so with that enrollment update, we're gonna spend much of this presentation talking about this next wave of, of school construction. And again, I, my, when I arrived here, this plan was in place. This leadership team is executing the plan with some adjustments. You know, as, as enrollment has continued to shift, as growth has continued to happen. As, as I have shared in, in other presentations, Board members that you've attended, in a, in a district our size, opening five schools in three years is, is aggressive and, and exciting. The, you know, if you, if you consider the size range here, the distance from Elementary 1 to that high school is really only about 21 miles between the two schools. So to be adding five schools over that three-year time period is a, is a really unique opportunity. To be clear, we're, we're really trying to achieve two things with this next wave of, of school projects. First, to relieve the schools where we're over capacity, to get them back closer to how they were designed, but also to do a little bit, or to have a little bit of excess capacity as the community continues to grow. And again, the, the trick is, is not to build new schools that sit empty, nor, nor to, nor to get to the point where you're out of room everywhere. You always wanna have some capacity and reserve in the right places because we can't quickly adjust, you know, within, within a, a single school year. And, and keep in mind, and Board, you know this, but just for the benefit of, of others who, who may be listening, these five schools are not the only strategy that this board is using to expand capacity. We also have added single buildings at various schools, which we can do a lot less expensively. And so, and, and so where we have green space available and, and where we can add a building here or there on an existing site, that, that strategy has, is already in play. So we're really gonna be looking at, at the, at the next two schools that open in August 25. That's the focus of the remainder of the presentation. And of course, we've already talked this morning about how to finance the two elementaries that will open in August of '26. But you know, a, a key point to this is that although we're phasing these in over a three-year period, because this still is a relatively small geographic space, the openings of these schools are very interconnected. And so when we talk about each of the schools that open in August of '25, we're not proposing a rezoning right now to get those schools open in August of '25. Now, if, if after this presentation and the board thinks about it, if you wanna initiate a boundary change now, we certainly are capable of doing that. The problem is that because when you adjust boundaries, you don't just impact one school, you impact the surrounding schools. We believe that we can't build attendance zones for the two schools that open in August of '25 without running the risk that when we build zones for the schools opening in August '26, we wouldn't have to move those lines again. And I, I think probably everyone sitting in this room would prefer to not have a family move twice in a short period of time. And so we've had to be creative about how to achieve our goals with the two schools opening in August of '25 and then have a clear plan for the two schools opening in August of '26. So again, there's an interconnectedness to the work and that's why we're doing this workshop today to, to propose how we're going to do that without just doing a, a traditional boundary adjustment and then doing it again in 12 months and again, 12 months after that, right? We wanna try to avoid that for the benefit of families.
I think we'd all rather just do it all at once.
Yeah.
Elections are 2026.
I do have a real quick question on this map. It's showing all of the major roads. I'm just wondering, is there a map available to show all, all existing roads? You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's only showing...
More details, maybe?
Right. A lot of...
We, we certainly can do that. I think actually, this is, this, this map has been used by the district for some time to show general locations.
Right, general.
Board, on the 9/24 meeting agenda, there is, there is a purchase approval request from the staff related to procuring a new mapping program that will help us facilitate the boundary change process when it's time. And that gives us incredibly granular detail, not just for these areas, but of the entire district. And that, that software product will actually help multiple departments with multiple projects. So again, we're bringing that to you for approval at the 9/24 meeting. We have some other products now certainly that do those things and, but, but we want one system where we, we can build multiple data layers, you know, look at... Right, right, look at how everything adjusts when, when you do start playing with changes to attendance boundaries.
The other map that has been used before, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's been a legend down the bottom, I think it's just not being used right now, but there's been a legend down the bottom where it says the school in kind of the intersection of the roads, I thought. Am I completely making that up?
I don't remember seeing that.
I don't know. But I, I think, I thought we did.
That was a summary, it was standalone by project and I gave the intersection.
Okay. So it wasn't necessarily on this map, but we have seen it, okay.
Okay, so having kinda set the context for all of this, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Jamarra Clark, who came on board in July. We're currently in a transition process where the Office of Student Assignment will move from IT to under Mr. Clark and he'll be leading this competitive, family mindset approach. So I wanted him to just, to share some thoughts with you after being on the job here about, what, about three months now.
Not that I'm counting, sir. Thank you, sir, Dr. Weisong. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. My name is Jamarra Clark. I am the new Director of Student Enrollment and I'd like to continue with the spirit of gratitude and, and highlighting collaboration by first really thanking my team at, at OSA, Office of Student Assignment, in addition to Ms. Darlene Black and all of our school support specialists, I'm sorry, school specialists, our specialists for, data specialists, I'm sorry. I also would like to make sure I thank Mr. Henson and our focus team and the registrars that are at all the schools around the county. It is essential that we work as a team and, and welcome all of these students into Manatee County. And these staff are on the front line and I, I really am appreciative of them working with me in these few months. So I, yes, ma'am?
Mr. McCarthy, Evan McCarthy, is he, is he part of this group then?
Well, he is a part of, of the team and I am thanking everybody that has such an integral part of making sure our students are enrolled, whether it's that our bus drivers that are getting them there, our, our, our food service staff that are feeding our students and make sure they're healthy, and all of our, our people who are working at, at, at all sites.
I'm just curious if he's, because I think he's, reports to IT now, right? So...
You're talking about Evan McCarthy?
Evan McCarthy.
He's, he's the, so Mr. McCarthy is Director of Assessment Accountability, reports to Mr. Jensen, does all of that instructional performance data work, but also has done some great work around data layering of, of specific variables. And so, yes, we, we turn to him anytime we have a complex problem and he very quickly gives us a solution. Yep.
You know, I've never seen him. I'm not sure he exists.
Yeah, that's not, you know... Always hide.
Sorry for the the brain freeze earlier. It's our state recording specialists that work hand in hand with Ms. Black and are so responsible for helping train our registrars around the district as well as. Making sure our port our reports are 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 on time and in compliance with the state. So this first slide, Office of Student Assignment, potential, next steps, we call it OSA for for short. First things that that we are trying to do are are the three Rs. We want to rebrand, relocate and and reorganize the Office of Student Assignment. Re- rebranding entails things like determining if we're going to change the name, you know. In the past, we used to be called the PIC Center, the Parent Information Center. We provide quality information to all of our our families in the community. We're considering names like the Welcome Center or Parent Choice Center, things of that nature. But we wanted to really represent what we're accomplishing in in that office. And we want to be a twenty-first century office that is welcoming our families, the community, and being a support system for our schools. We want, we're really looking into relocating. So we can make sure we are, as Dr. Yisong said, meeting our families where they are. No matter where they are in our 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 growing community. I'll talk in a second about some options that we are 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 considering. And reorganizing the Office of Student Assignment as we continue to grow and evolve as as a district. We want to make sure, as I said, we're meeting our families where they are. We're making sure we're we're streamlining our processes. We are looking at how we can provide clear, concise and consistent information to our our schools and our families. And how we can really create these wraparound services for for our families with our office. So these are all things that we're 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 talking about. And ultimately, we just want to continue to grow with the pace of our district and and meet our families where they are. So high expectations, high support. Dr. Yisong has charged our schools and our principals to make sure they're doing that for our students on campuses. We at the Office of Student Assignment want to have the same high expectations for our employees. Also, high expectations for the communication that we're providing for our families and our schools. High expectations for community service and making sure we're in compliance with the policies in our student enrollment policy. High support. We want to make sure our our staff feel supported, they have the information and training to make sure they are, you know, confident in what they're sharing with our families and schools. And we want to want to make sure that we are supporting those schools with information and streamlining those processes. Explaining what school choice is and making sure they have that information accessible and knowing that you can always call us if you need help. We are teammates with the other departments in the district and we want our school registrars to know that they can call us and and we love working with them. And just being a twenty-first century welcome center for our families. And those three locations that we are looking to to secure, we've already secured the Chamber Office out in Lakewood Ranch. Which we are anticipating being in in early October. Two new sites that we are 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 looking at is here, the School Support Center and also the Professional Support Center, the PSC and the SSC. So these are also sites that we are are strongly looking into, that are strategically located in parts of town that would be able to accommodate our families. And provide that that same level of service. Empowering and informing our families and schools. School choice is essentially about empowering our families with quality information so they can make decisions about the future education of their children. So we want to do the same thing for for our staff, I'm sorry, our schools around the district as well. New technologies. Being a twenty-first century environment, we want to make sure we are keeping up with that pace. One of those examples that we are doing to do that is having better communication with our families. And getting quality feedback so we can be a continuous improvement environment. Let's Talk is something that Dr. Yisong has been utilizing to stay in connection with our families. We want to implement that technology at the Office of Student Assignment as well. Other updates such as Script Choice. Appreciate Mr. Henson and our IT team for researching some of these great technologies that we can bring back and be more efficient in our schools and in our Office of Student Assignment. Script Choice would enable us to streamline the choice process and give parents more more access to that information and timely feedback. Also, Qmatic, which is. A system that would be a ticketing system and when parents come in, like you go into the tax office. They get a number and and they're in queue so we can make sure that we are logistically being more efficient in the office. And thinking about ways that we can reduce the amount of wait time on the phone, like a virtual wait room. And and we can call you back or we can make sure we make appointments. So just, you know, evolving with with the times and meeting our parents where they are and making sure they feel feel heard and listened to. The choice window for this year is going to be a thirty-day window. And last year it was in December. It'll be in in December this year and we're finalizing those details as we speak. And we are continuously updating policies and procedures to reflect this changing landscape and how school choice is impacting our community and and schools and and that information will be updated. Would there happen to be any questions regarding any of these details on this slide?
These are pretty lofty goals for student assignment. Frankly, when a student is assigned and goes off on their merry way, they don't really need to interact with OSA again, is that correct?
Well, we, OSA provides information to families. A lot of times, they will call us with questions about what schools are available, what programs are available. And somewhat like a a compass, we are guiding them through that process.
Is anyone keeping track of how many calls, you know, and the nature of the calls coming in?
That is a great question, Ms. Foreman. We don't currently have that data, but these technology tools that we're looking into, like the Qmatic, like the virtual waiting room. Would also provide data like that. In addition, surveys that we could, you know, survey our parents about how customer services is is working and. And if we are connecting them to different organizations or different departments. What we're finding is people are calling Office of Student Assignment for various questions and our staff is connecting them with these resources. Which is why they have to be knowledgeable about several things and flexible. But that is a great question, we are, we would love to have that data.
No, I'm I'm picturing the most calls I'm sure that the district gets is regarding transportation. And if there's a way to integrate. Transportation calls or information in a department like this, that would make sense because you'll have much more volume.
That is smart and I think Dr. Yisong is going to speak to an idea for the Lakewood Ranch office. That we we are hoping to add someone from transportation that would be in that office. That would be able to, right next door, right? So we would be able to close some of those gaps and and streamline some of some of these. You know, some of these productive struggle areas in that process. We know the the more difficult some of those things are. We give parents opportunity to maybe look, look, look elsewhere. So that is something that we are planning to do at the the Chamber Office Lakewood Ranch, having transportation, having some. Support services there as well to be somewhat of a one-stop shop for our families.
Yeah, because if we're talking support services as opposed to student assignment, those are.
Yes, ma'am.
Two totally different.
They are totally different, yes.
Totally different. Are we talking student support here or are we talking student assignment?
So. I think the way we're conceptualizing this is that, you know, really this concept of a family welcome center, again, as more people move into this community. Some can do all the enrollment online with no assistance, others want that face-to-face. Assistance, some just need help with a phone call. But I think beyond that, it it it's also that sometimes you've got a question and you just have this phone number, right? And, you know, how often are we saying, oh, no, you have to call this department and their number's on the website. Versus making sure that there's that warm handoff. Let's Talk, which again, we're we're in month three of implementation just at Transportation, Student Services and Superintendent's Office. Over time, if we decide to scale that technology up, even that will help facilitate those warm handoffs among departments. But but the other question we're really asking with this welcome center concept is. When a family does come, what other, what other services that are beyond the scope of student assignment? Which again, I I don't even think it'll be called student assignment by the time we're done. Because again, it is a, it 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 it's a competitive landscape, so that's the rebrand part of this work. And so with this Lakewood Ranch office opening right now, our thought is that in addition to having somebody from student assignment, you have someone there from transportation. You have someone there from student services so that it's that one-stop experience for a family that wants to come in person and get all of that done. At the same time, if there's somebody that needs, that is not new, but needs transportation assistance, there there is somebody face-to-face locally. And obviously, we'll try this out, we'll run the data and then we'll make adjustments as we go along. But I think this is a, this is a bigger project than just student assignment. Mr. Mr. Clark is reporting to Mr. Chapman and so does Mr. Barber. So this is also how do we connect our communications and our community relations to our departments that are most forward-facing, right? And again, you're not, organizationally, you're not going to end up with all of those departments working to one person. Transportation needs to work for operations, right? Student Services needs to work for instruction. At the same day, it's one team here, right? And so how do we really integrate across departments? The other, the other part of this is how do we achieve cross-training, right? So that when we get those higher volume of calls at Transportation at the beginning of the year, we've got multiple people who can answer relatively low-complexity questions like. Like, do I have the right route number? As opposed to, there's a problem with my route and in that case, we need our route specialists talking to those families. Not answering low-complexity questions like, what bus do I ride, right? So as we kind of untangle and sort that out, the goal is obviously to be more efficient, but also to be more helpful.
I I kind of look at this as kind of the whole change of all this is very similar to when you walk into a college, a university. And you're like, hey, I'm I'm looking to enroll, et cetera. What do they do? They tell you about the great things they're doing, all the majors, et cetera, the things you get involved in. As we are seeing our population grow from outside of of Manatee County and they're coming in. This is, this is the recruitment process. This is us saying, here's what we've got, you know, this is the number that these families should call to see what their choices are, what kind of schools we have, et cetera, right? Because there's other schools out there that are doing this, you know, and they're out there, they're giving mailers, they're they're telling, you know, and so we've got to be competitive in that landscape. And I think it's almost similar to what Mr. Tatum talked about, this is like a year or so ago, about like a. I don't know what you want to call it, like a resource center or something, you know, like a parent resource type center.
Right.
And where where maybe this is where it starts. And and then I I believe that student assignment is definitely outdated name for this, what it's potentially could be. But I will say too, and and you all are just sitting here as the people in front of us right now, you didn't create this, the old system. But I'm glad we're looking into this because the choice, the hardships, the blah blah blah, whatever you want to label that as, it is massively confusing in our district. And it needs to be revamped. So I'm glad you guys are doing that. And again, you y'all are just the ones who are here, right? I mean, you know, it is, you you didn't create the system and what we're doing. But I I do think there's some confusion on how do you do it? Do you do it, you know, all all that kind of stuff? So, no, I I think this is fantastic.
Thank you, sir, and we're listening.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
The idea that I was talking about, and it sounds like you guys are moving towards that, is just a more customer-friendly interface so that when someone calls up, like, you know, when you call your bank and. You get the initial person on the phone and they say, well, you have to go talk to this department, let me transfer you over there. You transfer over there and what happens is the person isn't there and then you have to leave a message and no one calls you back and you're like, ah. So, you know, someone grabs your problem and says, I got your problem and I'm now responsible for, not so much solving it, but I'm responsible for getting you feedback. And, you know, making sure that the office who can works on it gets the message and then they get back to you in a timely manner. So that would be something I'd really like to see happen.
Well, yes, sir, that those interactions are important. Dr. Yisong talks about creating moments on our campuses, these experiences that parents remember. And that call could potentially be something that is a positive experience that that parent remembers that gets them to connect to that school. So I think that person who's answering that phone is is very important. And we want to make sure that we have some some cross-training and and some customer service training. But that's just, you know, that's that's the spirit of of the office, but also of our school district.
To reinforce what you're saying. Without being a little self-serving, but I've had conversations since the beginning of the school year, and I had them last year too, where. You know, eventually a a parent would feel like they weren't getting the service or the answer they needed from the school system. And then they would eventually get to me and I would I would call, you know, I would say, well, give me a call and. And I would tell them right off the bat, look, I I can't tell anybody to do anything, it's not my role as a school board member, that the superintendent runs the school system. But in that interaction with them, they would say, often say something and even recently have said things like. Well, gee, Mr. Tatum, at least you're listening to me, at least you're talking to me because I don't feel like anybody else in the school system really cares. Now, that could be an exaggeration, you know, that's an anecdotal, but if we, you know, that's the type of thing you're talking about is that. You don't, you don't want them to have to get to the school board member before they feel like someone has heard them and is really trying to help them with their with their problem. And again, that's anecdotal, but maybe they really have talked to people in the school system and they just didn't get the answer they wanted, so they're trying to come to me to get the answer they want. But I I do, in in looking at some of these situations, I do feel like there are times when maybe. Someone was busy and and they gave him a quick answer or shot him a quick email so they can move on to the next. You know, thing on their task list to get done, but didn't really take the time to see the person, as I like to say in the leadership world as a human being, and really go, yeah, and. Okay, I'm going to grab your problem and we're really going to try and dig into it and and help you with it. So it's all good, I just wanted to make that point. I think we're moving in the right direction here with that customer service aspect, so.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Messenger.
Oh, thanks. I had a question. In years past, before COVID, and COVID, I think, kind of killed it. We used to do like a school choice fair where, I think we went to the convention center, I think it was a convention center, and all the principals from all our schools were there. And. Families, we had lots of families come and really get to meet all the principals and get information with all the different schools. Is there a consideration to do something like that?
That is a terrific idea, Ms. Messenger, and we are currently in discussions about doing the the fair. We want to update it, though. We are really wanting to focus on making a middle school showcase. We want to have it at MTC because the more families that are in that facility fall in love with it, like I did when I was there a few days ago. And see all the great things that that are taking place. So we'd love to have all of our. Families come through there for elementary showcase, a middle and potentially a high school so they can experience that area. So, yes, we we want to have that, we need to be able to showcase the excellence in in all of our schools and be able to highlight those programs. So that is a essential part of the our marketing strategy.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And speaking of that that marketing strategy. You know, as as discussed by our financial advisor earlier, we know that Manatee County. Is the best place to work, play and raise a family. And we're making the argument that Manatee County schools are the best place to educate your children. Because we have that tradition of excellence in our schools and in in our in our area. And as a product of Manatee County, whose parents were born here, I I can really speak to that tradition of excellence, whether it's academics. Making sure our kids are ready to learn and have what they need inside and outside of the classroom. Whether it's athletics, with all the championships that we've won from football to softball to. The extra, other extracurricular activities that we have in our county. the extra other extracurricular activities that we have in our county, the the arts and visual performing arts. I can go down the list of the excellence that we have, and I think telling that story and that narrative and and showcasing those awesome programs that are already here. And creating those pathways that Doctor Weisong was saying are are big rocks with our marketing strategy. So we want to have a a comprehensive strategy, not just one thing, right? So mass text, we want flyers, like the one page flyers that you see there. Greatly appreciate our executive directors and and working with our principals to create these one page sheets that highlight all the unique things that happen on each individual campus. The programs, the spirit. You'll see Manatee High School, Braden River Elementary, and Hale Middle there, which were randomly selected. But they all have their own cultures, special programs, and we want to make this information accessible to all families as they are, you know, not only looking for school choice opportunities, but looking at how awesome their their neighborhood, the school that is closest to their home is as well. And making sure that we're 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 providing that to our families, having it accessible in the office student assignment, but also in schools as well, and on our website. Doctor Weisong spoke about the principal feeder visits. That's creating a bridge from those elementary schools, which a few of them usually feed into a middle school. Having those principals have a conversation and really creating maybe some a night to where those elementary schools' kids can come over and be able to see and feel the energy in the school and really aspire to be there. Do the same thing from middle to high school, so we can really create these pathways and ensure that parents know in order for me to experience the excellent thing in high school at MTC or at Southeast High School or at Manatee, I need to stay with Manatee County schools to experience all of these great programs. All right, uh, school tours, making sure our schools are are allowing parents to come in, and we're welcoming. We have open doors. Come on in, and and that's how we get parents to to see the excellence that is taking place on our schools. We've already talked about a multifaceted approach, and making sure we're communicating to our families that our schools are safe. We have the safest schools in 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 Florida, guardians, we have SROs at every schools, compliance mechanisms to make sure that there's training, but also we know our schools are safe. Our kids are safe internally. We have guidance counselors, and we want to make sure we have a positive environment. You keep hearing the word excellence on purpose. It's on our seal, but also it's an aspiration of of all of our schools and our students. And lastly, making sure we have friendly environments. There was a article last year that Bradenton, we celebrated 100 years of being a friendly city. We have fifty, you know, fifty three, fifty four thousand kids in in our schools. How are we reflecting that in our schools? How are we welcoming our 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 families onto our campuses and creating those positive and safe learning environments that our families are really aspiring to be in, because these things are already happening here, and I'm excited to be with the awesome team to make that come to fruition or continue that that trajectory.
Just a quick question on Slide five. You said the choice window is thirty days coming this winter, December.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's for the next year.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's that's great. I like this, that we're projecting that out now, not at the end of the year. And also, when you're talking about the maybe the elementary students visiting the middle school and the middle, the high schools visiting the middle schools, so you can keep that vision
Yes, ma'am.
of where you're going to be going next alive, and including not only the academic, but the sports. And I have said that to some of the tennis coaches, go visit the element, the middle schools. That's where the tennis courts are. Maybe get a program going there. And I've talked to Mister Goff about this, get a little program going at the middle school, so by the time you get to the high school level, you're ready to compete, you know. Too many times, students come into a a school and they don't know anything about that sport because we don't have big sports programs in the middle and and elementary school. So I think this is a great vision. Welcome to the team. It sounds like you're diving in very deep. And I think there's a lot of good things that come out of this. And I do like the one page flyers. You know, some of those need to go home to Braden River Elementary, Hale Middle. Whoever's going to come from the elementary, send that to yeah.
Yes, targeted marketing.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
Students that are districted to those schools that are maybe going somewhere else.
Right.
And they may not know the awesome things that are going on at the school right in their backyard.
Exactly.
And I think we want to capture those students.
I think it's great.
And and just to clarify, that that thirty day choice window has always been there. It was it was the November, December timeline last year, so we're not, we're not making structural changes there. I think the other complexity is that the the controlled open enrollment statute requires us to maintain wait lists and look at, you know, opportunities for for families to get onto a campus that maybe was previously closed, but now there are seats. So it's we would like to simplify, but there's complexity in the requirements themselves. And so it's just a matter of, I think, getting it sequenced and really building out a solid system that that is as easy to access as we can get it within what has become a choice market type of environment.
I got another question, maybe it's IT, but when you send out like these flyers to parents, I'm sure we're not going to print them and send them home with students. I don't know what the mechanism is for messaging this, but if we send those out in email to the parents, is there a, I'm sure there's a way to open, to track the open rate, if they actually open it and read it? That might be something there too, that we can
Yes, ma'am.
Look at.
Great idea. All that data just gives us more, you know, more information to be able to.
Because if we send it out to, you know, twenty thousand students at all of the elementary that are going to go to the middle, and then no one opens it, then we're not doing a good job. So it's probably one of those things that, yeah, okay.
And that's why we have to do this comprehensive strategy. We have to not only do the mailers, we need, you know, commercials, we need radio, we need, of course, social media, because that's where the students students are. We need the websites, because parents are using all these mediums to get information, and we, that's a part of meeting them where they are. And, you know, do a multi multifaceted approach.
Awesome.
And again, we have we have principals who, at their schools, are doing outstanding work and 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 doing a lot of these pieces. Again, it's really just building the system so that the experience is common across the community. That's the, that's really the next step.
Right, exactly.
So
Before we move on, I think Mister Tatum had something.
Mister Clark.
Yes, sir.
Again, some of these, what I would call anecdotal situations that people bring to me from the community, sometimes it it appears that communication, there's always room for improvement with communication to the parents, right? But like one situation came up where there was a change, I guess, in the process to sign up for VPK, and and a couple of parents felt like they they weren't informed of it about the process, and so it changed, and they didn't get their their child signed up for VPK. Now, who knows? Maybe we sent flyers home, maybe we sent emails, and they just missed it. But that that situation happened. There was another one where there was an advanced math class that should have been offered, and it didn't get offered, and and so I guess, just looking at that and seeing how how we could improve, because there's always room for improvement, but improving those communications with parents, not just sending an email home, or just ideas about, or even verifying, like, if there are situations where parents, we need to make sure that a parent got got this information, like, you've come to us and said you want to sign your child up for VPK, and we told you in February, here's the process. And so in your mind, you've got the process. But we changed the process in May, but we didn't go back to you necessarily and tell you, or we just sent you an email, but you moved on with your life, like, okay, well, you know, we know that there are these parents that are wanting the VPK, that that kind of thing. I've just noticed, and again, that's anecdotal, but just a couple of things that have come along where things change, and the the parents, the families, just didn't seem to be up to speed on what was going on. That could be their failure, because they weren't responsible and didn't watch what we sent to them, but maybe we could do a little better on our side.
Well, yes, sir, and sometimes both things can be true. As a parent of a high schooler and a middle schooler, it is a little confusing, some information, you know, but then other times I need to pay more attention to 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 detail, which is probably most of the time. But uh, but yes, you're right, we can always communicate more effectively. I think making sure all families know that, you know, you go to that website, call Office Student Assignment, and there's that trust there that this is the 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 correct information. And and when when we give out wrong information, we apologize for it, and we improve and we correct it, and we we continue to move forward, but making sure that they they can trust that if they go to that website, the information is updated, and they're going to get clear, concise, and and consistent information when they call the Office Student Assignment. And schools need to have that too, because we need them and principals to to feel comfortable calling us and knowing that the information is aligned with our policy.
Okay, great. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
So we're going to turn to the next section of the presentation. Mister Goff, our interim director of Construction Services is going to provide an update first on school, existing school projects that are in process, and then we'll turn to the two new schools. Mister Goff.
Thank you, Doctor Weisong. Thank you, Mister Chair, members of the board, for the opportunity to give you a construction update on the prop, the projects we currently got going on with the Department of Construction Services. If you look at the first slide, I like to start with Blackburn Elementary. Blackburn Elementary started out as the scope of work of having a comprehensive HVAC, mechanical, electrical, and interior renovation of that entire school, along with one addition onto that school, which would hold the administration, cafeteria, dining, and primary classes within that building. Currently, to date, the project is moving very well, extremely well. We are, at this date, about forty percent complete. When we started this project in August of 2022 with Wanamaker Jensen Architects, we had a Herculean task in front of us. We built new portables to house the students as they were being relocated from one classroom to another to get the work done in place. All of the HVA systems, mechanical systems, new electrical systems are now currently in place. And Building Number One is moving along well, with anticipated construction completing around November 2025. Wanamaker Jensen and A.D. Morgan are doing a great job on that project, and we're looking forward to a scheduled completion, as I stated before, of November of 2025. Are there any questions that you might have regarding the information provided?
Next.
Okay. I'd like to turn next to our project, Hale Middle School. Again, Hale Middle School, the original scope of work was to have a comprehensive HVAC, mechanical, electrical technology and interior renovations done to that school, along with a ten classroom addition to that project. We have on that project long an associate, so as an architect. We also have half a construction company as our construction manager. That project started July of 2022. Again, we had design, we had construction of a portable farm to get the classes, the students relocated, relocated, I'm sorry, into the classrooms to allow the construction of those areas to take place. As of this date, we are eighty two percent complete with that project. Buildings one and eight are complete. We are working now to prepare for summer construction, in which we're going to do the locker room renovation. And the project, as I stated before, is on schedule and will be completed in the summer of 2025. Are there any questions, any comments?
I like the boards you had in the hallway.
Yeah, I love those.
Very nice. All of those boards.
I think your good pictures are cool.
Yeah.
I'd like to progress on with our next school, and that's Onico. Again, Onico Elementary was the total campus renovation of our HVAC systems, our mechanical, our electrical, our technological systems, and interior renovations. This is a very interesting project. We are, we're on a very tight site, so it took a lot of a lot of coordination, well, between the CM, the architect, and our 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 staff. Our staff have been incredibly unsupportive of us. And this project is moving along very well. We're sixteen percent complete currently. Again, this project started in August of 2022. The time needed to prepare for the tremendous amount of portables that had to be relocated, had to be connected electrically, mechanically, utilities, so forth and so on, along with the principals who work with us tremendously to get the situations established, so that we can get our kids in school, and we have relocations as necessary to keep the construction moving and maintain the scheduled completions that we've identified. The project, again, is on on, is on point to complete in April of 2026. Our new building is under construction. Our existing buildings, three and six, are currently under construction. The project is running well, and we anticipate completing this project as scheduled and on time.
I do have a question on this one in particular. The the portables on this aerial view that you have here, you're showing New Building One at lower left.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The portables, where they are, I don't remember what's actually going there.
That's going to be the new queuing, Miss Bray.
Okay.
For the cars into the campus.
Okay. I couldn't remember that part.
Yes, that's going to be additional queuing for the cars to get everybody off of
Off the highway.
Yes.
Right, okay, all right.
Any other questions?
That'd be awesome.
Thank you, Doctor Weisong.
Tara?
You did Tara.
Tara.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tara. Don't want to forget Tara. We're doing well there as well. Tara, again, we're upgrading all of our HVAC, mechanical, electrical, technological systems, the interior renovations that come along with that. This project, again, is going well. It's about forty percent complete. Sweet Sparkman is our architect and creative contractors. First time architects and engineers with us are doing an exceptional job on that project. And we started in July of 2023, and construction started in June of 2023. Substantial completion, we're anticipating substantial completion to be August of 2025. And at this stage, again, the project is going very well. And again, we don't anticipate any problems, and we're scheduled to meet the construction completion dates that we've defined.
Mister Goff, there is that little line in the middle there that says, project phase three delayed. What's going on there?
With that delay, we reorganized the schedule. We didn't change the schedule, we just changed the operations of our construction activities. So it was delayed so that we could make some adjustments in schedule because of material delays. And right now, Mister Tatum, we don't anticipate missing our our established completion date.
Great, thank you.
Lot going on. Thanks.
There's a lot going on.
There is, there is a lot going on. Our Construction Services team is a very proud, very committed group, and they're they're balancing a lot. And part of the reason why they're balancing so much, Board, is your commitment to making sure that we're not just building new schools, but we're keeping our existing campuses modern and up to date. So we we appreciate your support for that. I also want to acknowledge that, obviously, the for all of the employees on these four sites, there's excitement for the projects to be finished, but there's a a lot of a lot of inconvenience during during construction. And just a big thank you to Principals Voss, Nikotopoulos, Williams, and Campbell, because they're they're leading academic initiatives at their schools while also serving as onsite daily construction managers. So we're So we're, we, we appreciate, uh, all of them and their leadership teams as well.
And I'd just like to add, as Dr. Weisong added, uh, we could not do it without them. Uh, it can be extremely difficult, uh, managing architects and engineers. It'd be tremendously difficult, um, having to, um, irate principal constantly on our back, uh, as we try to, uh, work through the process of dealing with these, uh, truly intricate details of getting schools built. But it's been a great opportunity to work with our principals, and they've been extremely good to us. We appreciate them.
All right, so with that, uh, we're gonna now focus, um, just on the two, uh, new schools that will open, um, in, uh, August of, uh, twenty twenty-five. Um, we're gonna begin with the East County K-eight. Um, this is a, a very exciting project, uh, Board members, as you're, uh, aware. Uh, we have, um, two other K-eights that were, um, conversions of existing campuses, but, uh, this is our first ground-up new build of a K-eight in Manatee County. And so we know there's, um, a lot of interest and excitement, um, for this project. Um, there have been a couple of articles recently in, in different Florida media outlets about K-through-eight schools, and specifically that more and more districts, um, uh, are turning to that model because families are saying, "We want the convenience of as many of our children as possible on the same campus, on the same bell schedule, with the same communication system." Um, and, um, uh, other districts, um, uh, are further ahead, uh, with this, uh, grade span model, and so it's, uh, it's exciting, um, to be, uh, getting into, um, this concept. Um, it's also an opportunity, uh, referencing something we talked about earlier, it's an opportunity to do articulation differently, right? To make that move from the elementary years to the middle years, um, uh, in a more, um, effective, more meaningful, um, transition, you know, for families, uh, and for the school. And so, um, we're, we're excited to get this going. And of course, we do that within the context of remembering that the primary need for this project is the relief of being well over capacity at Gullett Elementary. Um, and so as we talk about all of this, we have to stay focused on, it's a, it's a great new model, it's also accomplishing a very high priority need, um, for the school district. So Mr. Goff is gonna share with you, um, where we're at on construction, and then we're gonna talk about programming and then the, uh, proposed opening plan for the school.
Thank you, Dr. Weisong. Um, the scope of work for this project was a two-story prototype holding approximately sixteen hundred and twenty student stations from grade K-through-eight. Um, the first building in the design will be our administrative me, administration and media center. Um, building two will be our elementary school. Um, building four will be our gymnasium. And, uh, and building five will be our food service, um, building. We're currently, uh, thirteen percent complete with the project thus far. Uh, we have NDC Construction as our construction manager, and we have, um, HKS Architects, um, currently on site. Uh, we started design in August of twenty twenty-three. Uh, construction started, um, in twenty twenty-four. Currently, we're substantially complete, I'm sorry, uh, substantial completion is scheduled for July of twenty twenty-five for the elementary school, and we're currently thirteen percent complete with the construction of that process. Um, we're six percent complete with the middle school, which we are scheduling to open in March, um, of twenty twenty-six. The project is currently on schedule. We've had some, um, challenges dealing with, uh, Hurricane Debbie, but we have a, a great, um, construction team, and they're doing a great job of keeping the project currently on, on, on track. Um, if you go to the next page, I'd like to show you the next slide. We're looking at the project from an aerial view, and what you're looking at here is a, uh, a courtyard with a secure perimeter, um, and a single point of entry as you, um, look down. Um, the site, as you look to the right, um, we have circulation for our, our parents, and extensive, um, queuing for our, our pedestrian traffic. On the left-hand side of the project is where we were bringing our buses, um, in and out, uh, the project. And the whole purpose of this design was essentially to get, uh, as many of our pedestrians off the streets and onto our campuses so that we can keep construction and traffic moving at the same time. Uh, the site has an additional building set aside for future growth. It's at the top, um, right-hand corner. Um, it could be a one-story or two-story addition, it's up to us and whatever our needs may be at that time. If you follow me to the second slide, we have a, an, uh, an outline showing what the different components of the building will look like and what they will do. Uh, color coding, starting from the top left, you see the orange and the, um, yellow building, which will be our administration and our media center. As you progress downward, um, you look at the two-story elementary school, um, which is currently, uh, under construction right now, and the middle school, the gymnasium, and the arts and the music building. This makes up the, uh, total components of the new K-eight, uh, that we'll be putting together. Um, again, we're on schedule. Um, we are confident that we're gonna meet the established, uh, completion dates, and, uh, I'm, I'm excited about this new K-eight since I had an opportunity to build the first, um, which is the, um, agglomation of, uh, Johnson and, uh, Walker Elementary, bringing those two together and establishing new K-eight over there at that Johnson Campus now. But, um, excited about where we're going and, uh, excited about the status of complete, status of construction on this project.
I have a question on fourteen, slide fourteen. Um, you have the little white box on the upper, looks like it was a court probably up there. Is that where you're talking about future growth? The little white box at the very top?
That's exactly right.
Um, it kinda looks out of place to me, um, on this design. I don't know why, uh, if there's structural or grounds reasons why it couldn't be over to the la, uh, right of that top right corner of the, uh, two-story elementary school classroom wing, is what I can see in print. Why is it out there all by itself?
No, that, that is where it is, Vice Chair. If you look in the upper right, there, there's, there are dash lines that say "future addition." So the idea is that that building would then spur, um, right off of building two.
I gotcha. Okay, I can see that now. What is that little white box then, up at the top of the?
It's like a covered area for outside, it looks like.
Oh, that's the covered area.
Yeah, I cannot read that, I did not see that.
It's like a playground to the right of it, right?
Yeah, I see the little yellow outline box now, okay. It was just a little confusing. Okay.
That's the covered area, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And of course, the unknown is how quickly we'll need that future addition, and it's certainly possible that it will be very quick.
Are we anticipating just going ahead and doing that, do you think, or not?
It's not part of the current project, but it's ready to go if needed. That's gonna come down to, again, growth projections, competitiveness thoughts, where the attendance boundaries ultimately fall. I mean, there's, there's too many variables to know how quickly that will be needed.
And funding?
Correct, funding as well.
But they've made, um, stub-ups, um, so we can make a quick design and construction. They've made utility stub-ups for that location so that we can have an easy access to start that construction if and when it is needed.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm good.
So having given you the status of construction, we're gonna really shift, um, to a look at the programming for the K-eight. And so, uh, Dr. Annette Codelia is our executive director for elementary schools. She is the, um, executive level oversight for all of the instructional development of both this school, uh, and the, um, North County Campus that we'll talk about next. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Codelia.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Cho, school board, school board members. Um, I have been given the great opportunity and the pleasure to be able to introduce our new executive, um, principals today, starting with Todd Richardson. So I'm gonna give you a little bit background on why he was chosen, um, great reputation in our district. Um, he has been in education since nineteen ninety-seven as a teacher. He started, uh, back at Blackburn, Blackburn Elementary School. Um, later, he helped to open Freedom Elementary as a founding teacher, so he does have some experience with founding a school. Um, he was also later an assistant principal at Abel Elementary, um, Rowlett Elementary, and then in two thousand and ten, he took the helm of Moody Elementary as the principal. In two thousand and seventeen, he went to Gullett, became the face of Gullett, and a very strong presence at the school. Um, he is part of the community, which is another reason that we thought, what a great opportunity to keep his legacy going, as well as, uh, to be able to infiltrate into a great community in the area. Um, so in twenty twenty-four, this past July, he was named as the executive principal for the new K-eight school. What's terrific about, uh, Mr. Richardson is that he does know the community. He's already been a part of Gullett and the future school community. Um, he's ready to continue that work. Um, he's also very highly respected by students, parents, and business partnerships and other community, um, opportunities. He's been tenacious and calm through this whole experience because we've seen it happen. Uh, just the abundance of growth and then those portables and just what he's had to deal with, and yet he's just got that calmness about him, deals with the families, is it just really able to handle some of their questions, some of their concerns. You may have gotten, Mr. Tatum, a call from someone who didn't want to wait in line, but, you know, with that many students, what can you do? So, um, but he has been able to do that. I think another thing that people appreciate about Mr. Richardson, and I don't mean to embarrass you in this, but it's his great sense of humor, um, because he is very concerned about making sure that traffic flows and that things are, you know, happening as far as operations are concerned on his campus, as well as all the academics and keeping it as an A-school. Um, but it's funny because I know I rolled up one day and I thought, "Who is that person dressed like a cone?" And then sure enough, it was Todd Richardson. So he has that humor in him, the kids love it. Um, I think he's also dressed up as a ninja turtle once, um, but, stop, no, right. Um, but anyway.
Do we have any pictures?
I think we do somewhere. I think, I thought you did, I'll have to dig for that. Um, but anyway, we felt like he would be the perfect person to kinda lead this charge on the human end of things, as well as, uh, he said he's learned a lot about construction, so that might be your next career in life at some point, right?
I could use him.
So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Todd Richardson.
All right, well, thank you very much for letting me, uh, have the opportunity to speak. It is a pleasure to, uh, be able to be a part of this construction project. Uh, basically from its infancy, from when I was named principal, uh, my wife and my, my two boys and I, over the summer, drove out there before construction started, well, actually during spring break, when it was just an empty field and took a picture. So we have a before, and then we'll have an after, once this thing is all done. Um, I am a product of Manatee County Schools, similar to Mr. Clark. I've seen our community grow. Uh, my family moved down here from New York in nineteen eighty-one, and we've never left. Um, I attended Moody Elementary, SUG Middle School, and the Manatee High School, uh, went to USF. And, uh, so I've stayed local my entire career, um, teaching and working at many different schools. When I was a kid, there was no such thing as Lakewood Ranch. If you ended up in Lakewood Ranch in your truck, you were lost.
Yeah.
Um, so now to see all of these buildings and schools and families coming from everywhere, it's, uh, it's super exciting. Um, we've seen tremendous growth at Gullett in the eight years, well, seven and a half that I've been there, um, starting out with eight hundred kids and most recently having, you know, up to fourteen hundred students on campus. Um, so this school is, that we're moving to with the K-eight is going to be really nice. May have the similar population, but a lot more space and accountability, uh, able to grow, um, with those numbers as we go. So with that, um, I'm a one-man team at this point. Uh, I am working alongside, uh, Mr. Goff, um, and the construction team with NDC, who has been amazing. Uh, I attend the, um, construction meetings every two weeks. Um, I've had my boots on the ground with them inside and out of the construction project. I've been up on the roof, I've been getting pictures. They've been showing me every little detail, uh, of this building because, uh, eventually it will be, it'll be ours, and I'll be tasked with what needs to take place there. Um, but they've been great. HKS, our, um, architect, have been really great with, um, some ideas or changes that I've proposed. We've worked together already with just little things here and there on how I could see some spaces that could be best utilized, knowing how I've dealt with potential growth, uh, at Gullett, and foreseeing and forecasting what we may deal with in the future with the K-eight, uh, knowing how much, um, growth is going on right now with neighborhoods and communities. Uh, we're doing our best to make sure that we're ready for all of that. So being a one-man team in terms of that, moving to this school is gonna be wonderful because as Dr. Weisong has stated, we want to try and target as many students that are currently at Gullett, uh, to make this change, to release the overcrowding, or reduce it rather, at Gullett. So having those relationships with families is gonna be a great, great, um, advantage to opening a brand-new school because we have good trust with one another. The parents trust where I'm going, what I'm doing, they, they respond well, we have great volunteers. So opening a brand-new campus, uh, and having those already invested stakeholders is gonna be, um, welcome relief. It's not walking into something brand-new, unknown. A lot of the families are already excited, uh, about the potential of them, uh, having their children at this school. Um, being the first new construction of K-eight is, is really great. Uh, this is the first of its kind. Um, Dr. Weisong and I have already talked about ways in which I can go and visit other K-eights in other districts and how they've opened, uh, finding out what has worked well, what didn't work well. Luckily for us, because of our timeline and construction, we're not opening it all up at one time. We have to open the elementary first and then kinda work our way into the middle school side, which is gonna be great because as an elementary guy for twenty-seven years, um, unfamiliar at little pieces of what middle school will look like, so I have some learning time, um, that'll help with that. But the articulation from elementary to middle, we've been talking about making moments and building those relationships. Um, this school is gonna be unique in that when these kids come in, um, potentially as age four, I will be able to work with them and our staff until they're fourteen. So we're gonna have ten years of a child's life that they'll be walking on our campus, um, from the first day of pre-K all the way through leaving of eighth grade. Um, that's a tremendous, uh, opportunity for us to make great impact for kids and their families. So I'm really excited about that. Um, as I mentioned, this community is super supportive. Um, I've already had a lot of informal conversations out at the car line, trying not to overstep my boundaries of, of overseeing two schools. Um, but a lot of families are anxious, uh, to see what is going to take place, what, what their children may or may not have opportunities for and, and so forth, and those relationships again. And the community has been, um, just really, really positive on this, on this move. Um, so we're looking forward to that. Um, some potential things in terms of planning for how the programming will look have yet to be determined. Again, just, um, right now, my focus is on making sure that Gullett opens, uh, and is underway and working with our current teachers and staff and families. So my part-time job overseeing the K-eight production, haven't had a lot of opportunities yet to really feel, but I have reached out to a couple of, um, organizations, et cetera, that I have some ideas for. The design concept internally for this school was done with a lot of forethought from our architect, uh, and tying into what the community really looks like and where the land is in terms of its nature and where it's coming from. So every element of the interior design is done with an aquatic ecosystem in mind. The interior design starts with the salt marshes where the precares come in, where the, basically what you would refer to in, in an ecosystem where the hatchlings, so that when they leave eighth grade, it's actually the design revolves around the coral reef, uh, because the fish have grown and they're leaving the reef out to the Big Blue Ocean. So these little components and elements, um, give us a little bit of opportunity for creative problem, uh, program, programming. Um, and one of those is, um, one of our partners, potentially, we're gonna be discussing an opportunity with Mot Marine as they get to open their new, um, aquarium, really right down the road from us.
Yeah.
Um, fortunately, one of the parents who's on the community relations team is a current Gullett family member, so it was really easy for me to call her and say, "Hey, let's just talk and see what could lead to a good partnership down the line." Um, the other thing that I'll be doing in October is visiting, uh, a school in Davenport, which is, uh, a school that is implementing what's called the Leader in Me, uh, program, which is based off of Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. Um, it was actually something that I was very familiar with when I worked at Rowlett. It's one of their common values and things, um, that has been in place there since the beginning. Um, we wanna try to create some sort of a leadership opportunity for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders because they're gonna be on campus with their little brothers and sisters who could be four years old. So we wanna teach them, you know, values, maturity, respect, and things where, when they are on our campus, they are truly leaders in helping develop the, the next generation of middle school because those students are just a few hundred yards away versus at a different campus. Um, so we're really excited about that opportunity. So I'll be visiting that school to see how they have their program in place, as well as what I learned from some of the other um K eight schools that I'll get to visit. Uh, one of the unique concepts of the building design, as um was shown earlier, uh is a concept in the building called Learning Neighborhoods. In fact, when the staff found out about this, they they start calling me Mr. Rogers, because who are the people? The Learning Neighborhoods are set up throughout the entire campus where they are essentially pod areas in the building that have offices already set up for our deans, our school counselors, um meeting rooms, et cetera. Because this campus is forty-five acres, uh a student could essentially walk a long distance from one area of the building to another. So this opportunity with these Learning Neighborhoods is we're going to put the resources in the building where the students are, so that if a problem does come up, if a student does need to speak to a counselor or if there is a disciplinary issue, those people are already in those areas of the building versus being in one remote location of a main office. Um, and so I'm really excited about that. And once this school is to the the capacity, when we have the full staffing, we'll have an opportunity to really have resources and meet the kids right where they are, uh versus having them come to us. So that's going to be something very unique, um that not many schools have an opportunity um to have. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Mr. Richardson, is is McNeil Elementary doing the Leader in Me program?
Yes, McNeil has that in place already, yes, sir.
I thought so. And are we built, is this school being built to shelter specifications or not? I'm just curious.
No, sir.
Great. That's the only questions I have.
The uh construction said it's going to be finished in March or April of twenty twenty-six.
That's the middle school portion of it.
Right, right. So you're not going to start middle school until the following August?
Yes, ma'am, that's the uh, that's the plan.
Okay, okay. And Gullett is going to be a an obvious feeder into the elementary side. Um, what is the feeder into the middle school going to be?
You're you're hitting the next section of the presentation, Mrs. Foreman, well done.
All right, I'll I'll wait then. Um, I also want to point out, I just pulled up and uh, um, Mr. Richardson, uh, you didn't talk about your Cupid outfit.
I didn't get that one.
I mean, you know.
We like to have fun and create memories for our students.
That would do it.
Yeah, that would.
We have a lot of fun and we work hard at the same time. You have to have, you've got to keep kids engaged, and there's fourteen hundred of them. If it means I wear a Hulk costume, then I'll do that.
Love it.
So board members, you uh you can see why Mr. Richardson was an obvious choice to uh lead us through this uh transition. And uh we're excited. The reality, uh as we move into additional K eights is our leaders do have to expand their their curriculum, knowledge and their um, you know, the the span of their work. And and the good news is we have others who have experience uh doing that. Uh, and so um, of course, uh Principal Grimes uh is um now at Johnson. And so I know he's sharing wisdom with Mr. Richardson. And then um, Mrs. Johnson uh is now up here having led a K eight. Dr. Callaway has K eight uh leadership experience in a different district. And so we have a a lot of um in-house resources. But as Mr. Richardson said, part of his transition will will give him some release time to go and visit other districts. And um I've reached out to other superintendents who are thrilled to host him, so we'll get those set up soon. Moving on in the uh presentation, we want to talk about um the um opening plan for the K eight and um uh how we get to um August of of twenty twenty-five. And uh again, this is within the context of this is one school opening, but we have five to open over the next three years and all of this is very interconnected. And so a a decision that you make in one direction may have unintended consequences for the next school that opens or for an adj- uh an adjacent school. And so we've spent a lot of time really talking about um uh how to accomplish this. The one detail before we get into those logistics is that uh you may remember from last May, Mr. Richardson has the executive principal title because he's he's still leading Gullett while serving as the planning principal for the K eight. At some point, um I will uh bring the board a recommendation with a transfer date um so that he can go to the K eight full time. Um, and then uh and and I'll bring you a a leadership plan or a proposed plan for Gullett uh as well for your approval. So that's a coming attraction sometime later uh this semester. So um having uh having said that, these next few slides have a lot of uh detail on them, so uh feel free to um to ask questions and I'll pause at the end of each slide. Um, as has already been shared, because of the established construction timeline, this is really a two-phase project. Uh, and in August of twenty-five, we'll open the doors for students in grades K through five. And again, when we do that, there will not be, um, we we are not currently recommending a residential attendance zone in twenty-five, twenty-six. Obviously, board, if when we're done, uh at our next meeting, you direct me to draw a zone, then we'll do that. But again, our our staff believes that if we draw that zone for twenty-five, twenty-six, we we may have to move the lines again for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, and then all kinds of 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 details start to become problematic. Um, and so the goal also, keeping in mind that this will still be a construction site in twenty-five, twenty-six as the rest of the middle school gets build out. And because we know this is a high-growth area, and if you have questions about how all of that is playing out, Mr. uh uh Mr. Mike Penley is here and and can and can share some insights. But we don't want to open this campus at a hundred percent capacity. Uh, because if we do that, then we need to talk about the next school east immediately. Um, and so we have to open with limited enrollment, saving space so that when we draw that attendance zone, we have room for the students who are in that zone. And then for whatever additional capacity we want to save for future growth as we plan out, whether we need more beyond this. And then we know that in August of twenty-six, the middle school opens and at that point, we're a full service uh K through eight. And so the staff's current thinking is that during calendar year twenty-five, uh and again, we know that we'll have a a board change over in in November. In calendar year twenty-five, we would propose going through that attendance zone uh creation process so that we would have a zone that takes effect twenty-six, twenty-seven, when we have the full campus available and there are no construction impacts. The new principal has had time to build all of the systems and structures instructionally, because there's a lot of moving parts to that as well.
So how do you determine which students then actually go to the school that you're getting?
Two slides from now, sir.
Forward thinking.
Yes. Okay, to move on?
Yeah.
So um what what we're proposing as a uh as a leadership team, and Mr. Richardson has been in all of these conversations from as as soon as he was selected and approved by the board, um is to treat the twenty-five, twenty-six school year um as um founding family seats. Um, and we would offer those seats to students who are residing in the current Gullett attendance area and who are in close geographic proximity to the new site. Because again, our primary need is to relieve the size of the Gullett uh elementary group, including students who have been reassigned to Freedom or McNeil or Braden River because of the significant uh overcrowding there. And so uh what we would propose um is that during October of twenty-four, Mr. Richardson and Director Clark will host um information uh meetings with families who are in a a targeted area, again, current Gullett families in that geographic proximity to the K through eight site. Mr. Richardson can share his vision, answer those questions, get that feedback. And then we would accept requests from those identified families who would like to be reassigned to the K eight for twenty-five, twenty-six. And again, we have this mechanism to do that in our current policy five-one-two-zero, which gives me as the superintendent the authority to reassign students when needed. Um, and so this would be a voluntary reassignment of families who want to go, who are in geographic proximity. The reason the geographic proximity is important is that although we don't know exactly where an attendance boundary line will be drawn, because that process has not started, certainly the geographic areas around the school have the highest likelihood of being included in that attendance area. And so you work from that that center point out. If you do it a different way, like let's just make it a school choice school, we'll take all the applications and 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 do randomization, you run the risk that you don't, you don't achieve the reduction of over uh of of uh over being overcapacity at Gullett. You also run the risk that you have so many choice families who don't end up residing in the attendance zone that you run out of room for those families more quickly. And thus you need that further construction. This is even more important in a K through eight environment, where typically in school choice, you would guarantee uh that someone could stay there through the highest grade level offered. So if you school choice a rising kindergarten family, you're reserving that seat for nine years, which is not something we've really had to think about before, um versus say, just a separate middle school. So again, there's a, there's a lot of complexity that's to this. So again, the thought is start with an identified area that's within that Gullett zone, have those information meetings, ha- uh have families who want to go to the K eight, do that voluntary reassignment request, which would be granted. If we don't get enough families, then we could expand out from there. We also do want to have, um or or we do need to think about remaining seats um uh in that area and whether there will be any available um for a hardship application, which could include new families moving in, right? In all of the developments that are 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 coming up right around the 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 K eight. And again, Mr. Penley's here if you have um, if you have questions about that. So this is the, again, the 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 staff's current thought. In doing some preliminary uh planning, and I want to stress this is preliminary, and I also want to draw attention to the title of the slide, Initial Recruitment for Voluntary Reassignment. We're we're not rezoning unless the board so directs me. The initial thought is that the area captured on this map would generate, assuming families want to go, would generate sufficient year-one enrollment to balance that concept of getting the school up and running, reducing the current student body size at Gullett, but not so over committing the new K eight that when a boundary does get drawn, we run into capacity problems immediately. And so going back to an earlier question about how quickly that new addition gets built, I I think the answer is it depends on all of these different variables, including how large that zone is. Because the other thing that will be different is when we do go to build an attendance zone, you've got to build a K eight attendance zone, not a K five zone, so that families know that when they're enrolling there, it's likely that they'll be there through the end of eighth eighth grade, unless they make a different choice. And again, there's a lot of complexity to that, because um your elementaries tend to be smaller, uh right? Then than than your middles, although not always. Um, and so we have to have all of those discussions when it's time to draw. And again, when you do that, if you draw that K eight zone, you're impacting both elementaries and middles in the same region. And so when you open that rezoning, you're impacting two levels of schools outside of the K eight model. And that's the complexity part.
Question, so, however, this, will there be any middle schoolers at the school? And maybe we don't know this yet, because we haven't looked at the map. But is there thought there may be some middle schoolers that attend six through eight, but did not go K through five? Does that make sense?
I think it depends on what the residential attendance area ends up looking.
How big you get, okay, okay.
And 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 also the space utilization in the building, because there are um, there are regulatory restrictions to what grade levels can be upstairs versus downstairs, how you designate classrooms, what restrooms look like. So um, so you have, you have all of that to think about as well.
I mean, naturally, you're going to have, the elementary is going to feed to the middle school. I mean, ultimately, if if everyone, if we lived in a perfect world, you're going to have a a nice, smooth transition. But especially in the beginning, are we going to maybe have to potentially pull to help Monage? You know what I mean? I I'm, again, I don't want to get anything out there in their ways and people obviously get emails. So I'm just, I'm just, this is something just came to my mind just now. The second question I have is, uh I think maybe you've already said this, but if we volun- if I go voluntary reassignment, am I in, like a choice, am I in forever, if I want to be?
Yeah, I think um.
And the only reason I ask that is.
In theory, yes, you want to draw it that way, right? Because you don't, you don't want to say, here, do this, and then we're going to.
And the only reason I say that is because um, as you mentioned, if this is, and again, preliminary, right? We have no clue. But if this is, let's say, this picture that we see, we don't get enough relief and we make it a little bit bigger and now we volunteer, someone is now in that zone. And then later on, the size doesn't really fit where that person's zone was, but they're in, but really the neighborhood's not, or that street's not. That's the only thing that can be, and again, uh we're not even at that level yet, but it's, that's the complexity of this, to be honest.
It 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 absolutely is, keeping in mind, again, that you have the um, uh, you have another elementary, right? Opening in twenty-six. Um, and so that's going to need a zone, that's going to impact, you know, uh there there are going to be cascading effects. And meanwhile, you have developments or subdivisions or or neighborhoods being completed. And the question is, you know, um, is that generating more enrollment? Um, and and if so, how much? Um, and do all of those projects stay on track? And and that's the fun of Mr. Penley's job, um i- 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 is tracking for all of that future growth. Because again, once we do this adjusted, the new new zones and adjustments to current zones, ideally, you want them to hold up for a while, so that you're not disrupting people multiple times. And and there's a lot of variables there, and again, there's also a little bit of crystal ball work in there.
Go ahead, ladies first.
We have an idea of, because you're talking about rezoning in a year. So we have an idea a year from now of what the population's going to be for for these schools. Is that fair to say?
We have an idea, but again, there are so many variables, the ones I mentioned, and 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 then also the, you know, the reality of are there currently families in these areas who are making a different educational choice for their family, but the K eight will be appealing to them and and they will want to go if they're in that residential attendance area. We don't know how many of those families there are.
I'm thinking of the family that moves into the area and they really don't know where they're going to be zoned. Because rezoning is going to happen in a year and new schools are coming in. So that makes, that could guide their decision as well to go to a charter school so that they know, because moving kids from school to school is not, you know, it's not easy. It's hard on the family, it's very hard on the child. So I'm wondering if we're better off going ahead and rezoning, but not implementing it? If you know what I mean, so that so that families moving in. So that, so that families moving into the area can say, yeah, starting in twenty-twenty-six, we're gonna be assigned to the K eight. And so we can go now, we can choice now, or, you know, it's a, be a founding fam- family, whatever, uh, whatever you wanna call them, but we can do that now. But we don't have to.
So we talked about that, um, and, and I think there are, there are two risks. The first is the earlier you move the lines with a later effective date, the more the unknowns and the variables become a problem, right? And then you kinda get down the road and you go, if we had waited twelve months, we wouldn't have done this or that, right? Because again, we don't control the pace of construction, we don't control the choices that families make. And so again, there's only a, you know, a, a, a certain degree of confidence we would have moving those lines too early. The other risk is if, if we did that, we also would need to go ahead and establish th- those zones for the, the schools that open in twenty-six, right? And the, the risk you run there, and it may be a low risk, but the, but the impact would be significant, is what if we have an external event, right? A, a kind of an unknown unknown that causes one of those elementaries to not be ready in August of twenty-six, right? We're already, uh, although we're still gonna make the project schedule work, we're already encountering complexity just from the weather in the last thirty days. We have to get through a whole nother storm season next year to get those schools on time, right? Some of those properties, we, we, we don't even have, uh, ownership, control of them, right? We have a, we, we have a deal in place, um, but we don't, we, we haven't had closing. And so there are still a number of risks related to those projects in twenty-six. And that's a concern in terms of just going ahead and doing everything now. I think if we were in a, I think if we were somewhere different in a, in a, in a lower growth situation, you could go earlier. But I truly fear that if we do it now, we may have to fix it more quickly than if we wait a year, we have another year's worth of data, we have confidence, uh, in our project schedules, um, and, and then, um, although no process is ever gonna be perfect, I think our confidence in the work would be higher.
Okay. Would we consider, you know, the two mile zone, uh, around the K eight? Defining that now, saying you're within two miles of the K eight, you are one hundred percent going to be, gonna be zoned here? And, um, and then anyone left over from Gullett, you know, is free to come? I just, you know, a family, families need to know, you know?
I, I, I understand, and obviously the goal, and that's why we're, that's why we're being cautious, right? Um, i- i- is to do an initial recruitment area, where we have a pretty high degree of confidence that you, that you would draw it that way. I just don't know what the other variables will be. Certainly, the board can direct that. This board can direct that, if, 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 if you so wish. We just have to then acknowledge that we potentially have tied our hands if there's one of those externally, you know, kind of intervening variables, where again, we look back and go, oh, but if only we hadn't done that. But I do understand, and we've talked a lot about, um, trying to make this process as stable as we can for families.
I, I'll say this too, just starting to jump in real quick. Uh, I had a chance to, to speak at the Lakewood Ranch, uh, Communities Builders Meeting or whatever, um, and, uh, they know, they're telling every new family that comes in, that there's a new school coming. And they have a location, they have it on the maps, et cetera. So I think everybody knows that there's gonna be rezoning, and, and they're making decisions, I mean, they at least know, I don't know what the family's decision is. They at least, they do at least know this is gonna be happening, and kind of a, where, I'm looking at the map on my screen, where the actual school is. They don't know where the zones are, obviously, but families are definitely knowing when they're coming in, that there's a school being built, and that this is where they're, they're close to this site, this is probably where they're gonna go. Doesn't mean they're not maybe choicing to somewhere else, you know, because Gullett's full, et cetera, et cetera, but I think they do know.
And if I may, I mean, one of the considerations we spoke about during, during planning for this was the default school is still Gullett. You know, we don't have multiple schools being impacted for this K eight. We're really just looking at Gullett students. So I think we refer to it as filet mignon or prime rib. Like, we're both off- offering great schools, so if you're not moved, you're still get the benefit of remaining at Gullett, and if you do move, you start the new school, your neighbors may join you the following year, once we know what our capacity looks like. I mean, I, being a West Bradenton kid my whole life, when I drive out there, I'm amazed at how many roofs are put on, on a daily basis. So the growth is so rapid, we just don't want, as he said, to tie our hands of not having the ability to grow with that community over the next twelve months. It could be exponential, and then we open with a thousand elementary kids, that, that side of the building may only take eight hundred kids. We don't want portables the first year we're opening a brand-new building, so.
Right.
Not to overstep my speaking, but just knowing from my experience that it's gonna be, it's gonna be, um, mammoth growth, that we're gonna have to make sure that we're reserving enough space for, in the, in the time being.
I believe messaging is going to be key, not only from the district, but from the developers who are building out that way, to let them know. I think, uh, creating excitement about this new school is key. But I believe too, on, uh, when we do the boundaries, I mean, the home rule, maybe that should be the term, the home rule, you know, the persons and the students that are living in the region will have the home rule choice, uh, cause like you said, Gullett. I mean, we're, we're, we're overflowing there, so they would get the home rule choice of going there up first, in my opinion. I know that when, uh, Braden River was being built, there was a lot of excitement with the community about their, uh, students, their children going to that school. I'm talking about, I think Braden River High. So I think that boundaries now or boundaries later, I just, I just think that communicating that it's coming, look at what our options are gonna be, your options are gonna be, uh, in the region, because, and then too, right after that's the high school. So this K eight is gonna bleed over into the new high school. That's who's gonna populate that, you know? So I think that the whole region out there needs to understand that we're trying to keep up with the pace of what's being developed out that way. A little problematic for me, knowing that we don't even own some of this property, I know we're, Mr. Pennley's working very hard at acquiring that, um, but I don't think that's gonna stop our vision of moving forward, because we have to plan accordingly for the next five years, and five schools in that is a huge part of it. So, you know, we get, all get the emails of how crowded it is there, how crowded it is there, just school, that school, whatever the case may be. This is our attempt to, to fix some of that overcrowding. And I think drawing the lines, I don't wanna do it twice, uh, absolutely.
Not suggesting that, yeah.
Right. I think one time is gonna do it. One and done is good with me, but I do believe the home rule, uh, thing should be in place. And I think you've got that, your vision and my mind, that's what you're projecting, is those students that are in, and the ones who we had to send to Freedom and all those other schools because of the overcrowding. Those are almost gonna be automatic. But I think a, a new family coming into the community, or a, um, new family that, you know, has a, a two-year-old, is gonna look at this and say, hey, if I buy right here, my child is gonna go through this K through eight, right down the road, and then they're gonna go right over to the brand-new high school. So they're gonna be right there with their whole fourteen years, you know, twelve, fourteen years of education in that region. So I think that has a luster that is gonna be very appealing to, uh, n- new families as well, not just the, the existing, so.
That's my point, though. Without identifying it now, you're within two miles of the K eight, that family with a two-year-old, they're not, they don't have any reassurance that that's where they're gonna go, probably. You know, logic says, yeah, that's where you're gonna go. But if, um, if that's identified, you could, you expand their, you can expand it at, when you finally do rezoning, um, but to... The family with the two-year-old, they don't know where they're gonna be, for sure.
And Mrs. Foreman, I think the reality, again, especially in a high-growth community, is that when you do K eights, the presumption as a rising kindergarten, as you're gonna be there through eighth grade, that's a nine-year span.
Right.
But we also can't guarantee that over a nine-year period, you may not need to adjust attendance boundaries. So the reality, and this is always true, even before K eights, there are no guarantees. There are, you know, there may be assurances, there may be confidence levels, but there aren't any guarantees.
So you're saying that if a family enrolled their child into kindergarten, first grade, there's no guarantee that they would leave that school at eighth grade?
Well, you would, I mean, again, you're, you're living in that residential attendance area, right? The question is, does the residential attendance area hold up for a nine-year period? The goal is yes.
Yes.
But again, there are far too many variables.
Okay.
You, as, as a board, you, you can't, if you draw a boundary in twenty-twenty-five, you can't make a guarantee that in twenty-thirty-four, everything will be the same way it is now.
That's what happened to Gullett.
Right.
Sure.
You know, Gullett, Gullett.
That's why rezoning needs to happen altogether, because there's a lot of, I mean, my personal reasons, there's issue.
Right. I, pl- please know, the preference of, of this entire leadership team is never to do this, right? Because we know it's agonizing. But we also know that the time is coming. And so all we're trying to do is come up with a process that allows us to wait and, 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 and really do it, and try to manage all of the cascading effects, with the hope that wherever the lines land, will hold up for as long as possible. And that's also why you wanna have robust school choice options and well-marketed options, so that you can try to manage enrollment that way as well.
Well, in nine, like you're saying, in nine years, we may be building another school farther out, so, okay.
One real quick question, and let's say things don't go as, as we've planned, and the worst-case scenario happens, and in July of twenty-five, there's only a hundred and twenty-five students that have said, yeah, and families that said, yeah, we wanna go to this new K eight, and so now we're sitting there with, I mean, is that, is that feasible? Am I, am I being too pessimistic, and what's Plan B if that happens?
Hey, well.
I think I've told a hundred and twenty-five people know this week alone, that, uh, we don't know. It, it is definitely the hot topic of discussion. I don't think we're only gonna have a hundred and twenty-five, it's.
I think we're gonna say no to people.
We have a very narrow audience, but there's a lot of people within that narrow audience, so.
Yeah.
I don't foresee having an issue with getting to a target number.
Okay.
Of, of some sort.
If an initial recruitment didn't get us that number, we would probably broaden, right? The rec- the, the recruitment piece. The other, the other reason to not just take the entire zone, right, or the entire attendance area, and say, who wants to go to the K eight, is that, um, again, we can't have everybody from Gullett leave and go to the K eight, number one. We don't have room, we're on a construction site. Uh, Gullett has to end up at a number that's, um, manageable. And so, um, so you're thinking about all of those things as well. Be, and, and beyond, beyond Mr. Richardson's prior experience, there's, um, we, we, we know that there are staff who, um, who, uh, will follow him anywhere. We know there are families who would probably follow him anywhere, and so that, that's part of that as well.
Okay, so, uh, it looks favorable, but if push comes to shove, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, basically, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, that's all I had.
One more, one other question, um. Bus hubs. I mean, we're getting pretty far out there, uh, from Matsy all the way up there. I'm hoping we are putting something like that into our plan, especially that far out, I just. Is that?
I mean, had, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna assume there's not gonna be that many bus people going to this school, probably more golf carts than anything, if I had a guess.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know, maybe.
This, so this, um, uh, the, the, the rough area that was sketched, um, would generate very little, uh, in, in the way of transportation impact. Keeping in mind that we won't save routes either, because you may very well have families that live in this area who say, you know, I, I, we wanna stay at Gullett, because we have other plans for middle school anyway, and those students are still gonna qualify for transportation, right? And that's, so that's your, your year of overlap. Um, obviously, fewer routes is better in twenty-five, twenty-six into the K eight, if at all, because again, it is an active construction site as we work on the middle school. So there's that to keep in mind as well. As for, um, I mean, right now, as you're aware, Vice Chair, we've taken the next stop on, um, remote fueling of buses, right? So we're, we're, we're not just storing and moving buses from Matsky. Um, that's going very well, according to, uh, our, our transportation leadership team. So that strategy is helping, um, and, um, and I think we look at, do we expand that? Um, and then, um, do we, um, you know, do we have the right piece of property to eventually do an East County bus hub? Is it, is it full service, is it limited service? In other words, where does bus maintenance happen? All of that depends on, you know, w- what you have from a property perspective, and uh, there's a, then of course, there's cost to all of that too. So there's still a lot to look at there.
Thank you.
I wanna take a five-minute recess, is that okay? Spend a couple hours here. And then, then you can finish at North School.
We're, 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 we're kind of at the end of the K eight presentation, so.
Right. So right between those schools, and we'll come back and finish this one. All right, uh, we'll come back at, uh, twelve-ten. All right, welcome back. Dr. Weisong will go ahead and take it away from, looks like slide number 23. North County School, another one.
Thank you, Chairman, and this will be our, this is our, our last major topic of this presentation. Again, just as we've kind of processed through the East K-8, we now wanna talk about the North County campus. And these projects are different, so you kind of have to set aside the operational details of the one, because we, we have a different set of challenges. The overall context is the same, but the operational details are different. And Board members, as you're aware, when this plan was first put together, this was conceived of as a traditional middle school site, serving grades six through eight. And the primary objective was relief of Buffalo Creek Middle, which at one time had a much larger number of students, is now not above capacity, but near capacity. And so there's still a need there, but the greater need that has emerged is relief of Harvey Elementary. And so, prior to my arrival, Mr. Rinaldi at one of your workshops made a comment about using, about building the school and using it as a temporary site for fourth and fifth grade. And that was, that was done in a public workshop, so the concept was, was out there. When we started talking about what that looked like, there, we jumped quickly into the logistics of making all of that happen, and what does that look like, and what's the timeline? And as we navigated those complexities, the question became, if they move, what if, what if we do this differently, and those grade levels never go back? And so that's really how the conversation has evolved. And so what we're looking at today is a single-school K-8 on two campuses, and that's the concept and the recommendation that, that, that we're going to share. So it's a very different context from our East County K-8. I'm gonna turn it back over to Mr. Goff, and he's gonna give you an update on where construction is at on this site, and then, and then we'll talk about programming, and then we'll talk about the opening plan, same, same structure as the last school. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Dr. Weisong. The construction update for North County is we're approximately 25% complete with this project. We've broken it out into really five components, A, B, C, D, and E. A being administration, C being, I mean, B being cafeteria, kitchen, C gymnasium, E and D being our classroom additions. All the foundations are in place, with the exception of the gymnasium, which is currently going on as we speak. Building E, we topped out on that project yesterday, so that building's closed in, we're ready to put windows in and start with interior construction. The E component of that building is, we're getting ready to put precast planks on in preparation to pour the roof of that building in about two weeks. So this project is moving very rapidly. It's probably the best-moving project that I have out of all of them. I wanna keep it that way, so I'm crossing my hands. If we would go to slide number two. As we can see here in slide number two, we have a single, single-lentry building where we have, to the left-hand side of us, sufficient queuing to get all of our traffic off of the roadways on this project. And to the right, you'll see the bus loop entrance that we've designed for this particular project. And in order to accommodate new growth, if you look to the top left-hand side of the design, you'll see a little red building denoted there, and that's where we anticipate a single-story or two-story facility or classroom building to go up, if need be. So we plan for additional growth here on this particular campus, and as you can see, notated on to the left-hand side, you can identify what these particular components of that site looks like. It will go to sheet number 26. There's a greater breakdown, which identifies the different components. The legend identifies the different components of the building, as you can see. The orange side to the far right, orange represents administration, coral, and the music rooms, as we proceed forward. You'll look up in the purple areas, and you'll see that we have here kitchen, cafeteria, dining, the gymnasium, it's the little catter-corner building to the right, which identifies, which identified in purple where the gym activity is gonna be, and the classroom additions are on the left-hand side, all connected by a central core mall area. But this project is going extremely well. We're very excited about the construction activities out there with Willis Smith and Harvard Jolly Construction. Dr. Weisong on board, I can't tell you anymore about this building right now. It's going extremely well, and we are very, very pleased with the construction activities. We will make the August 2025 date for opening here, and I'm looking forward to this project along with the other ones. Going to be exciting properties, and they're gonna be great additions to our district schools.
I think, oh, sorry, I, I just, I was just gonna say, I think that, you know, this is Willis's, Willis Smith's third one of these, same prototype. I think this shows that when you have the same contractor, probably the same subs, doing the same job, just how quickly, you know, it can potentially move.
Economies of scale change greatly. With repetition comes excellence. Skill sets are developed, they could probably build this building now with their eyes closed.
And, and if I can, if I can just add to that, I think, you know, one of the unique things is even when I toured the, the site in early summer, when we just had some foundations poured, and there are adjustments that Willis Smith has made based on what they learned the first two times, in order to get the project done, you know, with, within the timeline. And so not only is it a replication, but it really is learning...
Absolutely.
...on both parties' side, because we made some adjustments based on the early feedback from this SUG building. And so it's, it's, it's a close replication, but it's not exact.
One of the good things about this is after each job, we have an opportunity to sit down and see what we can do better. And so we get an opportunity to actually accelerate the process, because we understand that process, and we see how we could do it better. These three prototypes have been exceptional examples of what can happen when you pay attention to details, and you're looking for opportunities to accelerate the process without sacrificing quality assurance and quality control.
Thank you.
Is it, is this building, or actually any of the new schools, being built as a shelter or not?
None of these are shelters.
Of the five we're building out there, none of them are...
None of those are. There's no requirement for it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Question, slide 25. The red nine and 10, I can barely see what that actually...
Twenty-five.
Okay, future expansion, is that where you're anticipating that? I see that little...
Yes, that's item number 10. That's exactly where we anticipate putting future expansion. It could, it could be a single-story or two-story.
Okay.
We make that, we can make that decision when the time arises.
Okay, all right. I couldn't see the nine and the 10, I know.
I'll, I'll make it bolder next time.
It's just me. It's, it's just me, trust me.
And, and it is the same scenario here as with the, as with the East County K-8. The timing for that addition would come down to, what does the residential zone look like? What, what do growth patterns look like? Are we gonna build anything after this? Is there funding available, right? So all of those variables, that addition could, it will be ready to go. It could be done very quickly...
Yes, sir.
...or it may take some time to grow into it.
But we'll have all of the pipes and all of that, like you said before?
Yes, there are stubs, ready for that to occur.
That's a word I can think of. Awesome. Okay.
We okay to keep going, Chair?
Yeah.
Awesome.
So I, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Cadelia, and we'll talk about programming for a little bit.
Thank you. Well, once again, I have the honor of introducing a very highly esteemed and well-known principal who is very respected within the district. She is now the executive principal for this new model. Just to give you some of her background, she started teaching back in 1993. She was a teacher until '98, and then she became an educational literacy consultant, doing a wonderful job, apparently, as teaching. And she was contracted by both Manatee and Sarasota County Schools to present literacy workshops, to do model lessons for teachers, and to just coach alongside of other teachers. In 2005, she became an assistant principal at Mills Elementary School, later to go to Prine Elementary, and finally, as a principal, she became a principal at Braden River Elementary School in 2010. So she's been doing this for a while now. In 20, just this past July, she was named as the executive principal of the new, unique K-through-eight design that she'll be talking to you about further. She and her team are really, they're so innovative and creative as they create family. The phone calls I get from Harvey, for any reason, are usually positive, interestingly, saying, you know, what a wonderful environment it is. Occasionally, we get the traffic calls, too, but she has just really been, been able to create a culture that's, that's warm and inviting, in spite of, I'm sure most of you have passed at least Harvey Elementary, Barbara Harvey, if not stepped into it, but you'll notice that it's like portable city out on one side of the building. She doesn't allow that to be said, because she's, she has decided to call them learning cottages, which I think is so sweet. She also has managed to make sure that they're fully painted, construction's done a wonderful job of redesigning them, making sure that the mold is out of them, and so parents are really kind of happy, and I think even some teachers have been okay with that. So basically, and I, I don't wanna use the word cute, but you've done your best on that. And of course, the building itself on the inside is absolutely gorgeous still, beautiful design, and she's, she's keeping the learning going. Academics are amazing, it's an A school, in spite of all the incoming folks in the changing population within the school. So she, we figured, was a natural to kind of take that model and continue it, and she'll talk to you a little bit further about how she's gonna go about doing that. High standards, always, she's still a teacher at heart and a coach at heart as well, so she's gonna coach those staff members into becoming a wonderful K-8 school design, and children and programs. So with that said, I'm gonna pass this over to... So with that said, I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Rio.
Well, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. Good afternoon. And I guess I just have to say, when I heard you, Dr. Weisong, remind us of what was stated at a previous meeting quite a while ago about moving our fourth and fifth graders from Harvey. I believe that over a thousand.
Dr. Rio, can you, can you maybe just move your mic just a little bit closer to you? Yeah.
The concept originally was shared to potentially take those fourth and fifth graders and move them over to that new campus that was coming with the idea that then, you know, they would eventually come back. And all, all I could think of was a disruption that that was going to be to our school community, that the students that were our students were all of a sudden going to be going to this other campus and the staff members that we worked with, and they were, they were ours and, and I worked alongside them. And now we were going to give them to somebody else for, you know, a, a year or two years. And then it, it was initially this big disturbance to the community. And now this new concept has really turned it into just a unique blessing for us and an exciting adventure, something that's never been done before in Manatee County, this idea of one school spread across two campuses. And although it originated as just more of a, a problem-solving measure, it's turned into a really unique and, and awesome, exciting opportunity for us that our staff has taken and really run with. So the idea would be that our current campus is that maybe eventually pre-K. Right now, we don't have room for pre-K. But I know many, many families would love to be able to have their, their four-year-old start with us. So ideally, at some point, we would be able to have pre-K through third grade on one campus. And then that group of students would shift over as they aged out into that fourth through eighth grade campus on the upper side there. And the two campuses are in pretty close proximity to each other. So it's just a nice seamless transition, not only geographically, but also of course, just extending those values and norms that they've come to know at the primary school, their current school. And that's really our, our concept there. We've worked very hard not to just be a school and, and not to just focus on academics, of course, which is what all schools do, but to really have, have those three words that represent who we are, of family memories and passion. And it was the, the mission of our visionary team. When we were opening Harvey, we sat down and did lots of brainstorming. What would the vision be? What would our mission statement contain? In every meeting we had, every concept we came up with, every sentence, when we took those ideas and we started to look at, well, how did they logically group together? And how would we categorize them? It kept coming back to those three things, family, memories, passion. Those were those three categories that every idea and concept we had would fit into. And we realized that that's really what we wanted to create. And, and I'm happy to say what we have created. You know, our school is an extension of the families that, of our students' families and really our staff's families too. We're, we're happy to come to work or to school every day. We want to be there. Memories. We've made it our mission to create really lifelong-lasting memories for our students. Our staff really wants our, our students to be young adults, to fondly recall their time in school. And I'll always remember when my teacher or my school did this or that. That's what we want. We want school to be a very positive, long-lasting experience for them. And part of that is so that we can take the passion that we have and instill that in our students so that they go on to continue to be lifelong passionate learners. So those three words really represent what we are all about. And it's very exciting to think about the opportunity to take that not only from an elementary school, but now to expand that through eighth grade as well. We have some traditions that when we, when our staff started to hear about this concept, you know, of course, they went, but wait, what about, you know, all the things that they've, they've come to really love and embrace and our families too. And those traditions will continue. Things like educating the full child. Of course, we're not focused just on academics. We focus on a lot more than that. We focus, we have a whole program dedicated to teaching students social skills so that when you come into the building, they know to make eye contact with you, to extend a hand and offer a handshake. We're teaching them how to have conversations with others and those skills that sometimes get, get left behind and forgotten. So educating that full child, all of that will continue and we'll just be able to enhance on what we already do as we have our older children there with us on this campus. Our house system, you see some students there wearing their, their house garb. That was one of our house spirit days. Every Wednesday, if you come on campus, you'll see children representing their houses. And when they're in third grade, they get sorted into their house. And that house is their house for life. So we just got to do sorting with our third graders a couple of weeks ago. And it was, it was a day filled with anticipation and excitement. Houses are kind of like, think of your sororities or fraternities from college, but only the positive parts of that. So I have to preface that, I should. But just that sense of, of collegiality and commitment that you have to that team and that group. And that's what our houses are. We have friendly competitions, we keep points, and we award a house cup each quarter to the house that has the most points. So that's become a, a big part of our school culture. And these immersive learning transformations that you see on there, we do a school-wide transformation that even our parents have really gotten into. We, we, our staff picks a, a theme every year. We connect it to our learning standards and the staff comes in over the weekend, goes all out. The kids don't know what's going to happen. They come in the next morning and all of a sudden, the school's been transformed into, you know, whatever it may be. Last year, we made Harvey the most magical place on earth. And there were different like stations of theme park. It was kind of a theme park theme. So, and then our individual classroom teachers do an amazing job. Each grade level plans several of those. We call them those immersive transformations for our students. Just again, to create those memories, show their passion and build that excitement for coming to school every day. So when we think about being able to do some of these things across two campuses, it's just even more exciting. And of course, because it is one school across two campuses, we want to keep that same logo, our same school colors, because it really is just an extension of the school that we've already crafted. We do have some exciting new opportunities too, though. And we've actually have a visionary team of, of teachers who've started doing some of the brainstorming about, well, how do we make it new? How do we make it different? You know, fifth grade's a big year on an elementary campus. So what are the fifth graders going to get to do on this upper campus? But yet also then, you know, what opportunities do we have for those middle schoolers so that they feel like I still get to go to middle school and, and be a, a big-time middle schooler here? So we've already been hard at work coming up with some ideas and, and some experiences that we can create for our kids and opportunities for leadership too. One of the things that we'll have an opportunity to do is to be a medical academy that will feed into the medical academy that they have at Parish Community High School. So, and you can see that the pictures there shows, these are actually our fifth graders. They're ready for the medical academy. They got a head start. They are dissecting frogs there. That's what you see in that picture as part of their science unit. So, but those are the kinds of experiences that we'll be able to build on even more in that middle school as we partner with the high school to prepare students who may have an interest in those medical fields. And we know too, we have the hospital coming there in North River. North River Hospital will, I think it's a hundred and fifty-bed facility that's coming. And that, that organization is very excited about what they're doing. And we're all looking forward, I think, to forming some partnerships and working together. Academically, we're very excited about this Harkness Pedagogy Two. This summer, we had thirteen of our staff members that will become our fourth and fifth grade teachers and part of our administrative team. We went to some summer institutes and really learned more. We immersed ourselves, actually. We became the students for a week and learned more about this Harkness Pedagogy, which if you're not familiar with it, is really student-based discussion model where we are, the teachers kind of stepping outside of that and allowing the students to lead that learning and take, take ownership for it. The teacher may pose a question, the students may come up with their own question. They might have done some research ahead of time. It can cross over into all subject areas. But the idea is that you have these grand conversations with students, really having to do some critical thinking and expanding upon each other's thoughts, creating their own opinions and arguing for their sides. And just the collaboration that takes place, the learning how to have those difficult conversations and to express your opinion when it may be different from someone else's, but do it in a respectful way. All of that is kind of encompassed in the Harkness Pedagogy. So we're excited to, we've started doing some baby step implementation on the elementary side of things. And then we actually have a multi-year implementation plan so that we can see that really grow through in the middle school as well. So we have exciting things company, coming and, and opportunity to do that as we grow our one school across two campuses.
Thank you. Any thoughts, questions?
Well, just, just one, I think all of this is good. It looks like the community there wants to do the same logo, keep campus one, campus two, whatever it comes out to be. Educating the full child. I like that, that tradition. My question is about, I guess, I'm going to probably get into patriotism. Do you ever do a theme on patriotism in elementary? And this goes even for all of our new schools and our, do we ever do anything like that?
We do, well, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Right, right, like you did like the medical academy. Is there a, like a military academy? We never know what future leaders in the military we might have. That might be an opportunity we can do out there as well with all of, all of our schools, to be honest with you.
Well, and I can see too, as we start to partner with the high schools more, since now we would be a direct feeder to Parish Community. I could see where, I know they have an active JR OTC program. It's, it's possible that down the road, they might want to do a, a little joint venture there. So, but we do have certain required instruction curriculum elements, you know, that we do. Of course, classrooms were really focused on nine eleven just a few days ago and, and incorporating some of those discussions and content into their classrooms. So we tend to incorporate that through the holidays and those celebrations and moments of, of memorials and remembrances.
Okay.
You all good?
I want to thank Dr. Rio for her leadership again. I remember our first meeting on this and we said, bring all your concerns about moving students and teachers temporarily. And she brought a really long list and then we, we went in a very different.
How much, how time do I have?
And then we went in a very, we went in a very different direction from there. Also, I want to thank Mr. Jensen for doing a lot of the legwork to introduce Harvey to the Harkness Pedagogy and, and get our teachers to training last summer. And I told you when Mr. Jensen joined us that his area of expertise really is in innovative instructional models. And with, with, with a, with a very committed leadership team and faculty, I think Harvey will end up being an incredible model for what you can do with instruction in a public school. This pedagogy is used in, in, in some of the very respected independent schools that are also very expensive. And our, our students are going to get that experience here in Manatee in a, in a free public school. So we're excited for that. And I, I also want to acknowledge the Harvey faculty has really embraced a lot of these concepts. I did go out and meet with them last spring and they had a lot of questions and, and, and both, both about instruction and movement and the new campus. We made some adjustments internally to classroom design based on their feedback. So a lot of thought has gone in to, to the concept with a lot of feedback from the faculty. So thank you, Dr. Rio.
May I ask a question? How, what are you going to do about school starts time? If families got a student at one campus?
I'm, I'm four slides away, Ms. Wilson.
All right, all right.
You're doing great then.
I wish, I wish Dr. Rio was around when, when I had, was teaching in my portable. It could have been maybe cute instead of what it was.
You can really do a lot of things exterior even with just a little bit of wood nails and paint.
The teachers have been incredible. They're actually beautiful classrooms that they've created.
And, and, and of course, great faculties are, are led by great leaders. And one of the, I think, one of the things that, as we've worked on both of these projects, we have two, right, we have two campuses that are overcrowded, but families want to be there because the culture at both Gullett and Harvey is so strong. And again, part of the appeal of this, you wouldn't necessarily try this somewhere else, but we really talked about, this is such an opportunity to take a strong elementary culture, adapt it a little bit and, 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 and work it on a middle school campus and, and really try to do some different things. So again, we're, assuming we're moving forward, we're going to learn a lot from this process. In terms of, in terms of an opening plan, and again, this is where things diverge a little bit from the East K-eight. The current thinking and board were certainly interested in your questions and feedback. Our current thinking is of course, the August twenty-five opening with students in grades four and five. And I want to talk to you about grade six as well. Again, for the reasons we've already talked about, we do not believe that it is best to draw a residential attendance zone for twenty-five, twenty-six. The growth considerations in the East are, from a planning perspective, are even stronger in North County with, with the plans there. And so we're, we're even more sensitive to the idea of, you know, of, of really being challenged to get those residential attendance areas correct. And again, you have a new elementary school in the Artisan Lakes area coming in August of twenty-six. And yes, there's distance between them, but we have fairly large school zones now in that part of the, in that part of the district. And so again, as we seek to draw attendance areas, there are going to be a lot of impacts. And we're again drawing a K-through-eight attendance area. And so you're impacting both elementary and middle school areas when you go through that process. And so again, that, that's our rationale for doing the opening a little differently. And again, we want to start with limited enrollment because we don't want to use up all of our capacity right away. We want to be as prepared as we can be for growth. We do have two priorities here. Priority one, again, is the, is relief of Harvey Elementary. Priority two is limited relief of Buffalo Creek. We again are near capacity there. I was at Buffalo Creek last week, did some planning with Principal Scarborough. And, and, and we have different thoughts about where we want that number to land. But North County is the opportunity to do that. So the thought again, four, five and six in August of twenty-five. And then in, we work on, in calendar year twenty-five on that new attendance zone. And then in August of twenty-six, you would open grade seven. And either grade eight at the same time, or again, depending on how you draw things, you may want to ease in and move that grade seven up to grade eight. And the great news is we don't have to make that decision now.
Right.
But we're trying to forecast to you what, what some different options might be. So to populate grades four and five, a little less complex than the other school we've talked about. All current students in grade three at Harvey would move to grade four next year at North County. Again, those students are in that residential attendance zone. We're not making a change. We're just moving them to the upper campus. Current fourth grade students at Harvey, the entire grade level, would move up to the North County campus at grade five. So there a hundred percent of that shift is happening. We would include in that your current grades three and four students who live in the Harvey attendance area, but because of overcrowding, were reassigned to Mills for twenty-four, twenty-five. Those families by policy have the option to go in the Harvey zone next school year. And therefore, if they choose that option, then they go to the, the, the upper campus as well. If they wanted to stay at Mills, by policy, they would have that option. Um, if they wanted to stay at Mills, by policy, they would have that option and that's without transportation. Um, we've also talked about, what, what if a family, for whatever reason, that's at Harvey, doesn't like this concept or it doesn't work for them, um, we could, uh, we, we could offer those families reassignment to Mills, or they could select another school through the school choice process. Um, so that's what we would offer if, if a family had a concern, um, about doing this. So that's grades four and five, again, a little more straightforward. Grade six, um, and again, we, we don't have to do a grade six, we could just start with four and five, draw the boundary and then open the middle school. But I, but as a team, in analyzing the options, we think there are some advantages, um, to going ahead and populating grade six in twenty-five, twenty-six. And so we would propose to do that by offering a limited number of seats for grade five Harvey Elementary students to move into grade six on the upper campus. And the students in grade five who were reassigned from Harvey to Mills this year, uh, due to, uh, uh, due to overcrowding, would have the option to be in that group. Why a limited number? Why not all of them? Because we believe, based on all of the data we have, that if we move the entire grade five, then you would depopulate Buffalo Creek, um, to a point where over time, it would become too small. So we've looked at some options there, we, we, we don't think we can do the entire move. There, we also don't know, and this is the unknown until we work through it, there may be grade five Harvey families who want to go to the middle school that they're already, um, uh, within that attendance, and so they, they may not necessarily wanna go. Um, and of course, we also know that, that, um, uh, families may choose other options for middle school anyway. So, we, we, we don't know what that number is until we execute the process. So, um, our thought would be then, and again, um, uh, same thing, right? We're, we're talking about a single school situation, so Dr. Rio and Mr. Clark would hold information meetings in October about what sixth grade at the upper campus would look like in twenty-five, twenty-six. Families, uh, who would be, uh, interested would apply for reassignment. Here, we would look at a couple of different factors. The first is that geographic proximity to the new campus that's opening. The other factor would be whether there are rising fourth and fifth graders, right? Moving to that campus, in which case, obviously, we would prefer to keep families together, um, you know, whenever possible, unless again, they choose to do something different. So you would have that sibling piece in there. Um, and then beyond that, if we felt like we had additional seats and more interest, then we would do a, a random selection, um, as we would do for other, um, choice options. If there were seats left after that, uh, then again, we would have some options for hardship applications, which could include new families moving in after things open up. Um, because again, if you move into this area, you do have a, um, a middle school residential attendance area that, that's already in existence. Um, so that's our thought about how to address, uh, a limited opening at grade six. The reason why this is intriguing, um, is really twofold. First of all, um, it allows Dr. Rio to begin replicating that culture at the elementary school with a sixth grade group that has already experienced that culture. And so again, the, the, those students help the faculty and the administration set the pace. It also allows Dr. Rio to go out and recruit, select, whatever word you wanna use, that first middle school faculty, and we would start that, although they wouldn't begin teaching there until August, we could start working on that early second semester so that those teachers would have an opportunity to come and see what's already happening on the elementary campus. Um, and again, there might also be upper, um, elementary faculty who have the correct certification, who might wanna teach in the middle school. Um, we do know that by only having grade six there initially, staffing will be more limited, and so we don't anticipate the full buffet of electives in year one. And again, that allows the, the school to get to know their families and to kind of grow into the full elective offerings, um, on the campus. Remember that because you have grades four and five there, we're going to have art, music, and PE anyway. Um, and so we would start working with those and then see what else, uh, we can add. Um, so those would be the reasons why we would say, okay, let's go ahead and, and start a grade six. But again, we can't do it in a way, um, that negatively impacts another school. And so, um, again, these are our, our current thoughts. Admittedly, this is the most complicated part of the plan.
Uh, just real quick question. Um, I, I, I do like, well, obviously, we don't want to, you mentioned the sixth grade, could've just take everybody, it could obviously depopulize and, or let, you know, decrease Mills's, uh, population, I mean Buffalo Creek, excuse me. Um, won't that happen though, several years from now? And then to the caveat to that is, the zoning is what is gonna help rebuild Buffalo Creek back up with that?
That's correct. Because that gives us the opportunity to look at all of those.
I wanna make sure, I, that's what I thought.
We're, we have, we have done no work on what any of that looks like.
Right.
And we're, we're, we're gonna ask you in the next meeting to approve procurement of a product, but obviously, we're always talking as a team about, we have other innovative concepts to throw at the next board that may influence how lines get drawn.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Okay, to keep going?
Yeah.
Some other considerations? Thank you, Mrs. Foreman. Uh, we do have to talk about transportation here because obviously, you're taking, again, it's one school, two campuses. Um, and so we've run a couple of different scenarios, um, so I'm just talking out loud. Um, uh, one, one option is you maintain the dedicated routes that already serve the Harvey attendance zone, but you do two drop off and two pickup points, right? So, you drop off first on the primary campus, the current Harvey Elementary, and then you, uh, and then on that same route, you go up and drop off your fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. That keeps siblings together at the same bus stop on the same route, um, uh, moving along together. Um, so that's one option. Um, if, um, fifty more drivers fall into Mr. Warrington's lap between now and August, we could run separate routes, right? We could build new routes and run them separately. So, um, that's certainly a scenario. Um, a, another option we've talked about is running, uh, essentially a shuttle service. So, you, you run your routes, you deliver all students to one campus, and then the students going to the other campus get on the shuttle, whi- which would be a yellow school bus, right, multiple, and then you go up to the other campus.
Could be a Disney shuttle? Could be a Disney shuttle?
Cannot. Too many rules there, Mr. Chip. Um, but, um, that, that shuttle service, we've also talked about running separately because one of the questions we're gonna get is, if you're a parent with multiple children stretched across two campuses, what are your options? Well, our thought is, you, 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 you drop them all off on the, um, primary campus, and then we shuttle up the four through, uh, initially six up to eight, and we, and we just run shuttle service. So, um, so we have multiple options, and again, some of that may depend on how all of this falls out, right? We have to do recruitment and selection or reassignment, all of that, and then Mr. Warrington and his team have to lay out all the routing and look at capacity of routes and everything else. But obviously, we're thinking about that. Another thing we've talked about is, um, I would anticipate bringing you a unique bell schedule for the upper campus, um, because we anticipate, there may be families who want to do drop off on both, and we do need shuttle service time. So, we're thinking right now that the upper campus may start fifteen or twenty or twenty-five minutes later, and then finish fifteen or twenty or twenty-five minutes later. Um, we're gonna have to deal with school start times again totally separately for twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, but for, uh, but for, um, uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six, this is how we could get open and accomplish that, that, that staggering. Um, and so, um, again, I, I can't give you an exact schedule yet, um, I think there's some other unknowns, um, traffic density, construction, all of that, um, but that's on our mind. Uh, the last consideration and board, this is where I, I, I do need some input from you, um, fairly quickly, um, is that, uh, the board needs to identify the name of the facility pursuant to policy seven-two-five-zero, and of course, we've initiated that process for the East K eight, uh, and that remains open, um, through, I believe it's Friday, September twenty-seventh at noon, and then the staff assembles those names, gives them to you, and you pick the name. Um, on this campus, um, we can initiate that process now, if the board wishes to do that, but we have an existing name, right? We have Barbara Harvey Elementary. And again, from the staff's perspective, this is one school with two campuses, and so, uh, and so the board may just wanna adjust the grade level name, um, or you may wanna do something completely different, like keep or change the overall name, but then you also could name each campus. Or you can push that off, uh, you know, uh, uh, until later. So, there are multiple configurations available. I didn't want to open that process, uh, and get out in, in, in front of the board, um, but I, but, um, the timeline related to naming is important because at some point, Mr. Goff has to order signs, Dr. Rio's gotta get letterhead developed, you know, all of those things. And so, um, and so I, I, I do, uh, need some discussion, and of course, because we can only meet in the sunshine, this is the only opportunity for you all to get to have that conversation about what you would like to do with facility naming.
You want that now?
Um, if, it, uh, it, that would be great, to have that conversation.
Could we hear from Dr. Rio, her opinion?
Yeah.
Her desires.
I agree. I mean, you obviously know the, the pulse of-
Right. Uh, I mean, I will tell you that our families, I think part of the reason why we're all so excited about this vision of one school across two campuses is because we've, I'd like to think we've created something very special at our current Harvey, Harvey campus in our school. So the idea of, if we're really, if it's truly gonna be one school across two campuses, then I think you'll find huge community support for carrying that name across both. I think that's our identifier, is our name, just like on our building of our school, just like our names are, are, identify us as, as people. That name of Harvey identifies the, the boys and girls who walk in those doors every day and the staff as well.
Uh, Ms. Messenger had her hands up. Go ahead, Ms. Messenger.
Um, I was just gonna say, I agree with Dr. Rio. I, um, the Harvey name has such a wonderful reputation in parish, that I think it would behoove this board to just continue that name on, 'cause that is the whole, this is gonna be the whole school now. It might be two places, but it is gonna be one school, and I think we already have the basis of this school. This isn't really any different than when we grew Palmview, we didn't change, you know, I mean, like, it might be two campuses, but it's still one school. And so, uh, to me, it makes sense to keep the name and just expand it to two campuses. I think that that sends a really clear message that this is gonna be Harvey, and it's just gonna extend. So I, I'm in support of keeping it because I, I, I think it already has this wonderful reputation.
Thank you. It's gonna get better.
Yeah. I would, I guess, the only thing missing from this deck to me would be the aerial view, uh, of where the two different campuses are and how a potential shuttle would, what that would look like. Uh, 'cause I don't have that vision of where Harvey is and where Campus One and Campus Two would be. As far as the name, uh, how would you name campus? I don't like the name Campus One, Campus Two. Some, we had to come up with, I don't mind keeping the Harvey legacy, I would say that's what that is. Um, Legacy One, Legacy Two, I don't know, maybe that's an option. But campus is more to me like college. This is our, our own little Nick Community School, so, um, I'm, I'm not opposed to keeping the Harvey name, but don't, like I said, I just would like to have seen an aerial of the, what it would look like in the future, if we could have that. So I don't think that we need to initiate a policy seventy-two-fifty for this site at all. I think that, uh, I mean, we might get feedback from the community saying, oh, that's not right, uh, but this is just extension to me. It's just an extension. I don't know, you got a, a junior varsity and varsity site. I don't know, uh, but just some little ideas to throw out there. Maybe the kids can come, students can come up with ideas, or the parents can come up with ideas of, uh, how to name it other than Campus One and Two. But yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of initiating a, the policy to rename or do a name.
I think the cleanest would be to, you have North Barbara Harvey and South Barbara Harvey because it delineates which campus you're talking about. They're do that with Team Success now, they have the North Campus and the South, you know, so.
Right, they're calling it campuses.
Okay, all right, well, you know, we just call it North and South.
Yeah. Keep the name. Yeah.
Keep the name just-
I think, I think, yeah, I think you have an overall-
We need to figure out the separation of the-
An overall idea of the art, but I, I mean, how, how-
What are the colors, by the way?
I would, I would like to be able to get some feedback from staff about everything, like, upper, lower, whatever, you know what I mean? Like-
What are the, what are the school colors? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know that, but-
No, that's okay. It's a royal blue and a lime green. So kind of the color of this tablecloth and a lime green.
Okay.
So, in our, um, brainstorming sessions, I think just for purposes of delineation, we, we talked a little bit about, um, a, a lower school or a lower campus and an upper school or an upper campus. That's common in the independent school world, as we talked about, you know, what's a two-campus school look like? Um, we then, um, after discussion of, 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 of those two terms, I think we kind of adjusted to primary and upper. Um, one of the other realities, board members, and, and again, 'cause we, we, you know, we, we think about all the potential, you know, future pieces. Right now, we're doing K-three and four-eight because that's what makes sense from a numbers perspective. But we could get five or ten years down the road and we might have to do a K-four and a five-eight, or we might have to do a K-two and a three-eight. Um, and again, there are some regulatory things in there we have to work through, but there's, there's nothing, there, there's nothing there that's a limitation. Um, and again, I, I, we don't envision doing that, but we just talked about what are our options. So North-South could work, again, um, uh, you, you could do pri-, you, you could do the primary and, and, and up, you, you could do primary grades, middle grades. Again, you could do a naming process and name each campus separately, either geographically or with a name, and then you have the overall Barbara Harvey name. I, 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 I think you can go any direction you wanna go in. Again, I just didn't wanna initiate a process-
Right.
-that maybe three of you later would say, gosh, I wish we hadn't done that. So, that's why I'm looking for feedback.
I'm good with keeping the Harvey name. I'm good with that.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool.
Okay. So then we, we won't open that up?
No.
Thank you. That's, that, that was a, a good, uh, good discussion. So in terms of next steps, um, board, um, and this is not meant to be an exhaustive timeline, just, just thoughts on how we move forward, um, my preference would be to bring you an action item for consideration, um, so that, um, we've, um, memorialized either approval to move forward, or again, there's been some conversation about different options. If there's a specific direction, uh, that, that you wanna give me, uh, related to a structural matter, that would give you the opportunity to do that, uh, at the next board meeting. Um, and then that would allow Mr. Richardson, Dr. Rio, Mr. Clark, that October-November timeline to have, uh, formal conversations. Uh, again, I didn't wanna schedule any of those before we had the opportunity to publicly talk about this with, with all of you. Um, but our thought is that, um, if we could get some of these things done by Thanksgiving, then that also allows families to look at the district choice window in- then that also allows families to look at the district choice window independent of this process. Um, by January, um, I need to be adding staff, um, because as Mr. Richardson pointed out right now, I have two one-man bands, uh, planned in all of this. Uh, and so, um, we have to begin to cycle that on and, and there's a, there's a prior process for how you do that. Um, and then obviously the spring, we'll be bringing you construction updates, enrollment updates, programming updates, uh, uh, and, uh, leading toward an August opening. So that, that's our thoughts about timeline.
Sounds good.
Lot of work.
Under due diligence.
Yeah.
We, and, and we appreciate, we know it's a lot of detail, a lot of information, um, but we, we couldn't find a good way to chop this up over three or four workshops because we knew there'd be kind of intermingling questions. So again, I know it's a lot, but, um, uh, and, and, um, we appreciate your questions and feedback and the public kind of doing this now in the workshop, we know we'll start to get more parent questions and we need those because we probably haven't thought of everything.
Right, and that gives them the opportunity to give us input as well. You know, we're not the, there's a whole lot of people out there that have an opinion and, and maybe an idea that none of us thought of. So I welcome ideas to come in, you know? The best ones always land at the school, so.
There you go, very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it was great.
I agree.
Great presentation.
Thank y'all very much for coming in.
Yeah.
Very exciting stuff.
Yeah, great presentations.
Thank you.
All right, um, I think last thing, board, if, if you're good, let's just kind of crank this through, um, is the, uh, policy amendments. I know we all got a chance to look at what they were during the briefing. Um, so floor is yours now, Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so as we, as we revisit the process of policies, just for the public listening, um, these, there's a set of policies that you all, uh, voted to advertise at the last board meeting. So these are policies that are currently out for, uh, consideration, uh, and that, um, they will be, uh, on the, uh, October twenty-fourth, uh, board meeting, uh, for a public, uh, hearing and, and then, um, a, a vote. So, uh, these policies, uh, are, um, uh, fifty-one-twenty, uh, fifty-one-twenty-point-oh-one, fifty-one-twenty-point-oh-two, fifty-one-twenty-point-oh-three, and six-one-one, uh, zero. Um, we, uh, well, you all, the board, uh, spent, um, some time, uh, going through these and editing these, uh, during a previous, uh, workshop. Uh, we then, uh, took these and separately advertised them, um, uh, following, uh, you know, our, our board policy and state statute. So I'm coming before you, uh, with the revisions, uh, and, uh, and all of the editing, uh, that we, that you all, uh, would like to see done. So these are, uh, again, uh, out for, um, advertisement, uh, and they will be, uh, up for, uh, approval on October twenty-fourth, uh, board meeting. So if there's any, if you see any, uh, any questions or any edits, um...
On our board work, I don't see...
It's attached.
Is it? Policy sixty-one-ten?
Yeah.
I only see like four pages now.
Sixty-one-ten.
Oh, oh, I thought we were going to also have the, all the other ones, no?
No, no, tho- those are on, uh...
They're already done.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, that's good. So the, for, for the public, um, when we, uh, when we, you, at the previous bo- board meeting, um, two board meetings ago, uh, you advertised a large stack of policies.
Right.
Those will be, uh, um, uh, uh, there, there's also another set of, of policies out. There's currently two sets of, of, of policies in the advertising world...
Right.
...that are out for public comment. Uh, and so there's one set that has a very large amount of, of policies. Uh, we have properly workshop them...
Yeah.
...uh, and gone through them. They, they are currently out there. They will, they will, uh, uh, be, uh, at a board meeting for approval. Th- this is now another set, uh, of, of, of policies as, as well, so...
Right.
The rea- the reason why...
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
The reason why only these, uh, are in front of you is because these had substantive edits to them, not...
Right. But fifty-one-twenty is not on our deck right here.
Yes, it is.
It's not on the attachment. It says part four, but I'm saying when you look on executive summary, I mean, unless I'm looking, clicked on the wrong thing here, there's a discussion regarding policies. This is it. Only policy sixty-one-one-ten is the only thing listed.
No, go back, go back.
The first attachment on the...
Yeah.
Right up there, part four.
But I'm saying the language is, oh, never mind. I'm good, I'm good with all of it anyways. I just want to make sure it was on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I thought it said one of one.
Yeah.
I need another dike.
And again, the, the public can find all these policies on our, on our district website, uh, on, in the, uh, school board, uh, section, um, for, for, for them to review as well. And again, they're out for public comment, so...
I've reviewed them, I'm fine with the way they are.
Yeah.
Yes.
Obviously, the, and the fifty-one-twenty was told to us in our briefing. That's why I just want to make sure the public saw, but that's fine.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, I don't see Ms. Messenger let up to speak? No?
Uh, are you... No, because I saw it in my board briefing as well and I was comfortable with the changes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chapman, um, and I believe board, that is, uh, that is it. Um, great workshop. I, like I said in the beginning, I, I thought that presentation, the, the enrollment and, and what you just talked about with the school thing was a great presentation for the public to hear and, and really know as these things are obviously cranking along, I, I, that was very good. So I really, really appreciate that.
I did, I appreciate it immensely. It's so informative for our community to know that we're looking at our future and they should be looking at their future for their students, for their children.
Mr. Chair, just for the, for the community who, um, uh, by, by Monday afternoon or so, uh, on our district website, uh, there'll be a whole section, uh, dedicated to what you all just, just, what the superintendent and team just presented and, and also, um, uh, a, a recording of, of this workshop. So a member of the community will see on our district website the heading of, um, you know, East County K-eight and North County K-eight new schools. They press on that and they'll, they'll not only see this slide presentation, they'll see the recording of this workshop, they'll see where they can chime in and, and name, uh, suggest a name for the K-eight. Uh, there'll be a tab there where they can, uh, ask a question, uh, or, or ask for more information specifically on one of these two schools or both these schools. So there's a whole dedicated section, uh, for this, for the community so that, uh, as we know, um, many parents and community members will be looking to seek information on this. So, uh, look for that, um, by, by Monday afternoon or so. Uh, and again, uh, encourage the community or parents to, uh, ask questions and, and use that, um, site to seek information and ask questions because we, we really want to answer all of them and make sure that there's accurate information out there and, and then all questions are answered. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Good job. Good meeting. Board, we'll see you. We are officially adjourned.